Welcome to the December 15th meeting of the Oceanside City Council. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and begin with a roll call. Mr. Navarro?
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kine.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you. Please rise for the invocation. We have this evening Father Anthony Giribaldi from the historic Santeri Way Mission. Father Anthony?
Before I begin, I'd like to give a compliment to the city council for having a picture of every home in the city of Oceanside, but to have my own home is really an honor. May the Lord give us peace. As the Oceanside City Council gathers for the last time this year, we thank you, God, for your inspirations and discernment of the issues the council has discussed this year. During this special season of the year, whom we celebrate Christmas, Hanukkah, Eid, and Kwanzaa, times celebrating our different religious and cultural traditions, bless us with desires and creativity towards attitude of peace and cooperation. Continue to give us knowledge, discipline, and patience with COVID and its variants. Help us remember and be generous with those who are less fortunate than we are. And we thank you in advance for blessing Oceanside in 2022. May the Most High give all of us peace in Oceanside. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance as well as our National Anthem. We have OHS Choir with us today with Choir Director Lea Ritt. And who will be leading us in the pledge? Okay?
Please your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the presentation of the National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at this twilight's last gleam? Blue stripes and bright stars through the air of the skies All the rivers we watched were so gallantly streaming. And rockets red glare the monsters gleaming there. It proved through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-studded banner yet wave O'er the land of green and the whole of the rain?
I'd like to invite 12th grader Dante Gordon to come on up. He's going to sing a really beautiful song that he chose to learn this year in honor of Christmas. So this is Dante singing "Mary Did You Know."
Mary, did you know that your baby boy would save our sons and daughters? Did you know that your baby boy has come to make you new? This child that you deliver will soon deliver you. Mary, did you know that your baby boy would give sight to a blind man? Mary, did you know that your baby boy would calm the storm with his hands? Did you know that your baby boy has walked where angels trod? When you kiss your little baby, you've kissed the face of God. Mary, did you know? Mary, did you know? Mary, did you know? Mary, did you know? The blind will see, the deaf will hear, the dead will live again. The lamb will leap, the dumb will speak, praises of the Lamb. Mary, did you know that your baby boy is Lord of all creations? Mary, did you know that your baby boy would one day rule the nations? Did you know that your baby boy is heaven's perfect Lamb? The sleeping child you're holding is the great. Oh, Mary, did you know? Mary, did you know?
Before you go, before you go, could you say your name one more time?
Dante Gordon.
Dante.
Gordon.
Gordon. Dante Gordon, y'all. So we have another treat, right? Yeah.
Okay, and I'm bringing out the Oceanside High School Advanced Vocals. This is a combo group. It includes the Soundwave Show Choir and the Concert Choir. So they're going to set up in their section, sopranos, altos, and tenor basses. Come on out, don't be shy. This next one is in honor of Hanukkah. I really appreciated the invocation at the start of the meeting. That was really beautiful, and it's really important to celebrate our diversity in religious choices and nonreligious choices and everything in between. And so our program that we performed on Friday included a ton of songs, and I told Mayor Sanchez it was really difficult narrowing it down to just two. So I hope you enjoy, Dante. And this song is called "Be a Candle of Hope," and it reminds me of how we all have an inner hope and an inner joy, and we can share it with each other, just like candles share their flames.
This is Lea Ritt, who is the Choir Director, OHS, right?
Be a candle of light, be a candle of light, a beacon of truth in a darkened disguise. Shimmer lights in a green and watchful green grow, the more light we give, the more light the Lord will know. When you light so bright a candle, you keep your light but give it away. In a flame and the flame it grows as the darkness turns to day. Be a candle of light, be a candle of light, a beacon of truth in a darkened disguise. Shimmer lights in a green and watchful green grow, the more light we give, the more light
We're going to take a picture now with everybody, and I wanted to say that I was on the OHS Honor Choir, so to see their talent is just so fantastic. So they rock it. So this was a little bit of holiday cheer for this evening and for hopefully throughout the rest of this year.
Hey, everybody. Let's say cheese. Cheese? Okay. Perfect. Looks great.
So next, we have a very special presentation, and that is of our Employee Service Awards. We have five employees that are here that have given so much service to the city of Oceanside. We wouldn't be able to do as much as we can without them. So we're going to go ahead and begin. I didn't know if I was going to have some help here. Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez, councilmembers, department directors, and audience. It is with great pleasure that we present to you tonight employees who have reached their praiseworthy accomplishment of 20 years or more in service with the city of Oceanside. I will invite the department director for the respected employees to come up and stand next to the mayor before announcing the award recipient. The first employee that will be recognized is from Water Utilities. Carrie Dale, please come forward. Shawn Calio. Shawn initiated his career with the city of Oceanside in November 2001 as Maintenance Worker in the Public Works Department. Shawn served in the Public Works Department until 2004, when he promoted to Maintenance Worker Two in the Water Utilities Department. In 2006, Shawn was promoted to Utility Worker One and is currently serving as Utility Worker Three. Please join me in congratulating Shawn for 20 years of service to our community. Our next employee is from Public Works, Hamid Bahaduri. Please come forward.
We're calling out the directors groups of Department Two, Be the Ones, Scavengers, our Honor Eater.
Ira Rhodes. Ira began his career with the city of Oceanside as a Maintenance Worker One in October 2001. Ira has served in multiple divisions within our Public Works Department, including Street Maintenance, the Harbor Division, and is currently serving as a Maintenance Worker Two among our peer maintenance team. Let's congratulate Ira for 20 years of service to our community.
And I need to forget to say, if the family wants to come down, he would, you know, live, he would, please come on down. So if you forgot somebody, you know, you would take over that, do over that. Do over that.
Our next employee is from the Police Department, Chief Armihoe, please come forward. Jody launched her career with the city of Oceanside Police Department in November 1991. Jody has served as a police records technician and a public safety call taker. In 2016, Jody was promoted to Police Records Supervisor, where she is still currently serving. Let's congratulate Jody on 30 years of service. Our next employee is from Development Services, Jonathan Parego, please come forward. Christine began her career in December 1991 as a public service officer in the Police Department. In September 2000, Christine moved to a customer account representative and supported both IT and the Finance Department. Christine was promoted to Senior Office Specialist and has been supporting the Development Services since 2010. Let's congratulate Christine on 30 years of service to our community. Thank you, Christine. And lastly, we'll recognize an employee celebrating 35 years of service, Deanna Larson, please come forward. Sherri began her career with the city of Oceanside as a library technician in October of 1986. Sherri has dedicated her career to the Library Department through various positions. In 2006, Sherri promoted into a Management Analyst role and then into a Division Manager. Sherri became the city of Oceanside's Library Director in 2012, where she continues to support the library staff, our agency, and our community. Thank you, Sherri, for 35 years of service. That concludes tonight's Service Awards. On behalf of the city of Oceanside, congratulations to everyone recognized this evening. Thank you for your continued commitment to our community. Please join me in a round of applause for tonight's recipients.
All right, we have a closed session report. Mr. Mellon?
Thank you. There was no closed session on Items One and Three on the closed session agenda. Council did meet on Item Two, Conference with Legal Counsel, on an existing workers' compensation claim involving Dana Paul and the city of Oceanside, case number ADJ 10406840. The council did give direction on that item, but there's no action to report at this time.
Thank you. Next are Consent Calendar Items, Items Five through Twenty-Six. Are there any requests to pull or any requests to speak on any item from the public?
None from the public.
Okay. Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the agenda for, excuse me, the Consent Calendar Items. Let's vote, and if, Mr. Navarro, if you can register, a no vote for me for Item Number Seventeen, but the rest is a yes.
Motion approved, 5-0, with the no vote from Mayor Sanchez on Item Number Seventeen.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and go to Item Number Thirty-Two, which is request by Councilmembers Jensen and Rodriguez to discuss a designated dog beach location during the off-season in the North Beach area and direction to staff to investigate possible locations and times. Councilmember Jensen? Or is it Rodriguez? Okay, Councilmember Jensen.
Yes, the possibility of a dog beach in Oceanside is a concern to our community. I've had a lot of emails from people wanting to have a dog beach, and I think it's something that we need to look into. I understand that there are various locations that would be appropriate, and I think that it's a good time to give direction to staff to review those locations and do the studies necessary to determine where the best place would be for a dog beach.
Did you want to make the motion per what you wrote?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Okay, is there a second?
Mayor, I have my light.
Okay, Councilmember Rodriguez.
First of all, is there any public comment on this?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Navarro? We have seven registered speakers.
Okay, perfect. I really want to hear what the community has to say. You know, we're not making a decision on a dog beach tonight. I think it's way too premature. I just want to begin the stages as a part of the global study on a dog park for our city. We're moving forward as a city with our Parks and Recreation Department and the community partition process of understanding what the needs of the communities are, what parks would be appropriate. We are in a society more and more that has a pet, has a dog, and as a part of quality of life and giving that to our, our community, I think it's appropriate to include what a dog beach would look like. There are other San Diego County cities that have appropriately implemented it, and we want to learn from their mistakes, their successes, and just research what this would look like. Again, I do not support approving a location or a dog beach tonight. This is just to give staff direction to include that study as a part of their review of the entire city of Oceanside, which would include a thorough public process so that we ensure that this is what Oceanside wants. And so I would definitely like to amend the motion to give staff instruction to include the consideration of Oceanside beaches as a part of the global study on future dog parks for our city, the impacts, the costs, the opportunities for, you know, registration, permitting, application. I would even like to see the Humane Society take on that responsibility as a part of their future contract, because right now they're responding to dog complaints as a part of their new contract. They're licensing all Oceanside pets right now, and maybe we can add this on as a part of, you know, responsibility of theirs, so we don't have that burden as a city to include for our future parks. I've seen other cities issue permits at an annual fee that's cheaper to their residents and then outside residents, and they have a special tag that is attached to their leash so that, you know, enforcement services, the Humane Society know that that's an owner that has agreed to follow certain rules and guidelines. Otherwise, there's consequences. I just think it's too premature to make a decision now. We're simply asking our staff to research the capability of such a program, and community input is so important to our future decision-making. So I would like to modify the motion. Hopefully, you can create something more simpler than my wordy statement, but we're just looking, in essence, for the city staff to include beaches as a part of the global study and what that would look like. And do you agree to modify?
I agree.
You agree? Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Okay, and I just wanted to state for the record, we did have a dog park, and it was being supervised by the Humane Society. It closed. They no longer are interested at all in having any dog park, dog beach to supervise. It is a liability, and I do also want to note that we, our beaches are disappearing anywhere that is suggested. We've gotten a lot of emails from residents on Pacific Street, as well as residents from North Coast Village, which basically would have been the, near the site that was noticed for this evening. So that, now there is a more general motion on the floor, and so we'll hear from the public. But our beaches are disappearing. We don't even have enough beaches for, I was going to say, our humans, our, our residents and our visitors. Mr. Navarro?
We have seven speakers registered on this item. We have two podiums, so as I call your name, please come on down to either podium to talk. And we do have some open chairs here at the front. Our first public comment is from Kevin Jacobs, to be followed by Nilly Albin, to be followed by Mark War, to be followed by Matthew Rice.
Hi, Kevin Jacobs here. I think you all make very good points. It's something that needs to be discussed. It's a big choice. It's a big movement. You're also right that the beaches are, are not as robust as they used to be, so that's something to consider. But my, my two points that I'd add is, is a personal community building side that this would bring, is also an economic perspective that I think is important. So for the personal community building side, we live by Stewart and Cassidy. We came into the neighborhood with no one, no friends, and after last year and a half of lockdown, walking our dog around in the various parks, we have people that we go to dinner with, spend weekends with, spend holidays with, all because we met them in a community space with people that had dogs. So having some dedicated off-leash space, it's beneficial to the dogs, of course, but I think there's a huge benefit to the community. That's, that's the personal side that I think is important, but also friendship is a warm, fuzzy, feel-good reason that does not also mean that it is the only way to go. So the economic perspective is obviously important. I think the dog beach benefits the local Oceanside economy in that way as well. The reason I believe that is because right now, my wife and I, we bring our dog down to Del Mar, Ocean Beach, Dog Beach, and we typically spend part of the day there. We walk by local shops. We go shopping in those. We eat at the local restaurants. I'd rather spend that money in Oceanside. I'd rather others come and spend their money in Oceanside. I'd, I'd rather others come and spend their money in Oceanside as well. I think a dog beach would help that. So that's all I have. Thank you for listening. Hope you have a good holiday.
Nilly Albin, to be followed by Mark War, to be followed by Matthew Rice, to be followed by Michelle Lustig.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and city council members. We have adopted rescue dogs into our family for over 30 years. We're dog lovers, but we would never ask for a dog beach anywhere near our condo complex at North Coast Village or the harbor. We have personally witnessed a significant increase in owners allowing their dogs to use Oceanside Beach as a toilet, with no regard for others, over the past year. There's no one available to monitor this activity on a regular basis. Oceanside Police Department resources are already stretched thin without having to patrol the beach to enforce dog owners to pick up dog feces. Bacterial levels are already intermittently too high at the mouth of the San Luis Rey, emptying into the ocean. A dog beach would add to that already present bacterial level. The area between the North and South Jetties is a very popular place year-round. There is no quote-unquote "off-season" to allow for a dog beach. A proposed dog beach in that area would not only be used by Oceanside residents, owners and dogs from around the county would be wanting to use that beach as well. This would cause traffic and parking nightmares, not to mention the additional amount of dog waste deposited on the sand and then washing out into the ocean. The Coast to News has published an article in the past regarding the possible closure of the dog beach in Del Mar due to dangerous levels of bacterial contamination. Please do not let this happen in Oceanside. If you do consider a dog beach in the future, please consider a more remote section of beach or a dog park located in a more inland area, less heavily used by local families. I also have two comments from two other owners at North Coast Village who could not be here this evening. One is from Cindy Bashford. It's been a continuous desire for dog owners to have an off-leash dog park at the beach. The problem with that is the pollution doesn't go home with the dogs or their owners. It stays on the beach until displaced into the sand. If there are heavy rain, it washes into the river and into the ocean. This creates yet another blighted area that no one wants to clean up. The beach needs to be protected. And from Bob Simpson in Unit E3, I'm a veteran who has fought for this land and beach and feel desecrated every time I see a dog poop on our lovely beaches, and the dog owners even when requested, do nothing to clean up the waste. This issue is obviously about the owners, not the dogs. They just don't seem to care about sanitation, others' rights, and respect for Mother Earth. Thank you for your consideration.
Mark War, to be followed by Matthew Rice, to be followed by Michelle Lustig, to be followed by Paul Perkins.
Is it okay if I pull this down when I speak up? Mark War, thank you, Mayor Sanchez and council members. My, my remarks will be short. I'm an Oceanside resident, but also a business owner here. It's a second-generation business. We manage vacation rentals down on the beach in this area where the proposal is taking place. And I am a dog owner and a dog lover, but we are in opposition of dedicating that area as a dog beach. We think there are some positives to it, obviously for those that are dog lovers and owners, but for myself, being one, I just do not believe that the consequences or the negatives would oversight the positives, that there should be somewhere more inland. I don't believe dogs should belong on the beach for many of the reasons that were just mentioned by Ms. Albin, but also because I believe it will have a detrimental effect to the overall attraction and tourism of Oceanside. I do, I believe that even though it will be a dedicated area, that it will have a negative impact. Our business alone, I know it will have a negative impact on us and hundreds of thousands of dollars that we remit to the city every year in taxes. We believe it will cause less demand for the properties and rentals and, and I know that it's not, every dog owner is, is letting their dog defecate on the beach and leave it there, but we know that there are some that just naturally that happens. But those are my remarks, and I would ask you respectfully to, to take that into consideration as future plans are made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matthew Rice, to be followed by Michelle Lustig, to be followed by Paul Perkins. And again, as I call your name, please step up to either podium.
When I was young, I always had a dog, but I would never in a million years imagine taking a dog with me on vacation. But clearly, times have changed. The world is changing, right? People, especially people with money, high-end people, they expect now that their dogs, their pets, be treated as first-class citizens. Maybe it's crazy, but that, the world is changing, and business has figured that out. Hilton brand has figured that out. These people are concerned about dogs pooping on a wide-open beach that literally self-cleans every 24 hours. These are businesses, high-end businesses, that are allowing animals into their brand-new, beautifully-built buildings with carpets, right? Clearly, the world has changed. Business is responding. Cities, including the City of Oceanside, needs to respond as well. World-class destination. That's what I want, and I think that's what you city council folks want as well. World-class destination. When someone is looking at a brochure for Oceanside, what are the things to do? I want number three on that boat list to be dog beach, right? Let's bring in the people. We have the most amazing natural resource right there. Why would we take economic advantage of that? Bring in more people, right? Both local, there's tourism and there's local tourism, right? To the point of someone else, like, I travel to Del Mar. I'm a local. I should be here, right, with my animal, let alone bringing people from outside. The costs, I can't imagine, are very high. A couple signs, maybe a couple more doggy bags, right? I, I don't know, but keeping it simple, I just feel like it's a win-win-win-win. It's a win for the community, those of us who live here. It's a win for tourism. It's a win for economics, and it's a win for the city in that you get this benefit for basically nothing, right? So I really hope that you support our efforts, that you consider this proposal, and that we move forward. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Dr. Michelle Lustig, here to support the exploration, as you so well stated, councilmember Rodriguez, of whether or not we can have an area that would be dedicated for off-leash activities for our dogs. Certainly, my first preference is the beach because of my proximity to that. I do believe that there are areas that would not have a large impact on residents. When we're, the area that we're talking about doesn't have very many residents that abut that area closer to the harbor, but we are absolutely open to any other part of the coastline or other areas that might be considered to have this area. It is not only an economic opportunity. I've spoken to many businesses up and down the 101 and off North Cleveland and off Mission who are in agreement that this would be a boon for our economy, would bring in more commerce, but also it's about health and activity and being outside with your animal. You're getting, you're getting exercise at the same time that your dogs are. You have the social aspects that you've already heard about, but honestly, I don't see any obstacle that Del Mar, Coronado, or San Diego City overcame that we in Oceanside can't overcome if we work together. We are not less than those other cities. We are better than those cities, and we can absolutely come together as a community. We can look at the challenges, look at the opposition, and come together to address everybody's concerns in a way that we will be satisfied as an entire city of Oceanside, that we're meeting everybody's needs. We can absolutely mitigate the, the trash issue, the hygiene issue. I, myself, walk my dog and walk alone, and I clean up trash from all kinds of things on the beach and on the street, and I do that every single day as a member of this community. And I'm willing to personally volunteer my time on a regular basis, whether that's weekly or monthly, to be a part of a volunteer team that will ensure that whatever space is chosen, that it is kept clean and, and beautiful so that we do not do any damage. That is not any of our intention. We do not want to diminish this community, not in any way, shape, or form. We want to enhance it, and we are dedicating and volunteering our time in order to get that accomplished. So I respectfully ask that you please keep an open mind as we go down this path together, and please allow us to do that collaboratively with you and your staff. Thank you.
Paul Perkins, to be followed by Carolyn Kramer.
Mayor Sanchez and council members, thank you for the time. First, I want to say that I started this initiative. Currently, I have over 2,100 signatures here on change.org. Over half of them are Oceanside people. I tried to email this to you last week, and also thank you for the time a lot last week, but the emails were kicked back, so I tried. If you would like to see it, I could drop this off to anyone. I also have 60 comments that have people commenting on pro-dog beach, and I try to not have your emails flooded with this initiative. So this is the route I went, but direction from councilmember Rodriguez, I did start a website now. We are gathering emails. This just started recently. I could always provide you with those later in date. I feel, as I have walked literally 10, 50 miles handing out these flyers and talking to these people, I have come over maybe two or three out of 100 that are not engaged in having a dog beach there. And it seems like the biggest issue that we have here is the poop cleanup. I can tell you, as I walk my dogs around the harbor, as I do on a boat in that harbor area, there is very little, very little poop there, and if there is, a dog owner or myself that sees it, it's very clean there. So I don't think that's one of the major issues there. I do agree that we've got a shortage of beach, but the dog beach in Del Mar is much smaller. That beach area is very, very small. We're not looking for a huge amount. I have talked to Mr. Kaim on the phone about maybe some other alternatives, and we are completely open to that. All we're looking for is just a little slice of beach, be able to go down, keep in Oceanside, not drive to Del Mar, Coronado, and let our dogs run off the beach. It's, I believe, a very civil thing to do, not problematic, and the place we proposed over in the North Beach area, I think, would enhance parking revenue over there. I have been a surfer, surfed these beaches for over 40 years now, over 50 years. That north area, great surfing beach. There is not that many people over there. I've never had parking issues except for during the summer months. I think the proposal of having a off-leash dog beach in the winter months would be cohesive in that area, or, like I said, we're open to any other area on a dog beach. I thank you for your time.
Carolyn Kramer, longtime Oceanside resident. I have information, so I want to read it. For those of us that have dogs, we love them, and I am no exception. Dogs are very much a part of our family, but they do not belong on our Oceanside beaches. Please keep our municipal code 4.15 intact. Create a dog park for our furry friends, but please not on our beaches, which are already impacted at all times of the year, not just in the high season. The cities of San Clemente and Newport Beach just recently voted to keep dogs off their beaches because of increased bacterial levels. I am very concerned about the bacteria that would result from dog feces, as well as dog urine, on our beaches. Even though many pet owners are responsible, we all know there are those that are not responsible, as we can see on daily walks around the beach and around our neighborhoods. Even as has been suggested for just a couple of hours in the off-season, do we somehow tell the dogs that we cannot poop or pee on our beach during these hours? We are not just talking about Oceanside residents here. We are talking about people from San Clemente, Tapestrano, Temecula, Riverside, Escondido, Vista, Carlsbad, as well as other North County cities. We will be inundated with dogs pooping and peeing on the beach, which eventually will end up in the ocean. How do we keep dangerous breeds from coming to the beach? Where will the enforcement come from? The beach is where families go to relax with their family and friends. Stepping in dog feces or having a child startled or knocked down by playing dogs is not an option we want to create. Responsible pet owners will pick up after their dogs, but please tell me how do even responsible pet owners pick up dog urine? Dog urine and the bacteria that seep into the sand, as well as the remnants of dog feces, eventually will end up in our ocean as high tides come in out. So those of you with small children that like to enjoy the beach, think of this scenario. A family arrives at the beach with their chairs, blankets, towels, and the kids with their buckets and shovels. The kids can't wait to dig in those holes and play in the sand. So these kids are now playing and digging in the sand where, an hour ago, lots of dogs were playing and peed and pooped, leaving bacteria in that same spot where the kids are playing. Then comes the peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, sand and all, and they have just ingested that bacteria left behind by dogs on the beach. Please keep our current code in place and do not allow dogs on our beaches at any time. I fully support the city going forward with a designated dog park, but I do not support dogs on our beaches at any time. Please don't waste, waste staff's time. We've been down this road before. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the registered speakers.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Weiss?
Thank you. If you want an off-leash dog park, go to Lincoln Middle School on any Saturday morning. I'm aware that staff is in the process of looking at a dog park, or maybe more. My personal preference would be that there be an off-leash park somewhere that's more centrally located, not on the beach. However, I'm willing to support the motion that staff would at least look at the beach as an alternative. To me, it wouldn't be a very high priority, but I'd at least like to see what other options there might be. In fact, if you want to have a dog beach, go south of Wisconsin. You can probably take your dogs there tomorrow. Well, but there's no beach there, sorry. But I would at least support staff looking at it as an alternative, but I personally would prefer it somewhere more centrally located so that it's available to a broader portion of the community.
Deputy Mayor Kaim?
I'm also supportive of a dog park. I think we need one that's centrally located, but I think, well-intentioned, a dog beach, especially the current location, would cause a lot of unintended consequences, especially right now with our lack of sand. That's our busiest beach in the city, and sometimes it's the busiest beach, one of the busiest beaches in North County. There's junior lifeguards. We have volleyball. You have a playground. It's different from a Del Mar beach where there's a cliff and something separating it from roads, so you could have dogs running, you know, irresponsible dog owners, because most, while most dog owners are, there's a few that'll cause problems for everyone, running through the playground, junior lifeguards, all kinds of different issues. I just think a dog beach there would be a disaster. South, and this is what I would support at this time. I, I can't support one that includes the beach, but if we go forward with our sand nourishment project, and we have big, healthy beaches in the southern part of the city where there's a buffer between roads and playgrounds and different options, I think that'd be a much better spot. But our current beach situation, sand situation, would not facilitate a dog beach well. So I would support, if the motion was amended, looking at dog parks right now, and then in the future, if we have viable beaches, then reassessing it then, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
I don't agree on amending the motion. I think we're just looking at, I think it's value to the community to take a look at it, and, and that's the motion. I do also want to bring up another important point here. I noticed while we had speakers that everyone on this dais, including our mayor, is not wearing a mask, because that's a personal choice, and in the City of Oceanside, we respect that personal choice. And so if you're comfortable and you want to take off your mask, please feel free to do so, and we can continue this meeting comfortably. If you want to keep it on, God bless you, keep it on. But that's my comments for the remainder of this. Thank you.
Thank you. So I wanted to add to comments and why I can't support this. I have tried to get the Humane Society to re-
I have tried to get the Humane Society to reopen the dog park. As you know, I think many of you were probably here. It was very, very successful. A lot of people bring their dogs. Unfortunately, one dog was killed, and so they couldn't, they were no longer willing to take the liability. I thought it would only be closed for a little bit of time. As to a dog beach, a dog beach, we are under regulations with respect to water quality. So I have, I doubt that, I believe those issues would come in, as well as in that place, endangered species, the western snowy plover is, especially during nesting, it would definitely be a very, which would, I think, could probably end up being this time of the year. So I'm against this. I do believe that this would have to go to the Coastal Commission as well. And I think at this time, it's, you know, maybe some future time, if there is a larger beach, but at this time, locals can barely enjoy the beach. It would have been nice if we had been doing sand replenishment since, I first brought this up back almost 15 years ago, to do our own sand replenishment project. And unfortunately, at that time, it didn't, it did not seem to be a priority. But we are a priority now, and so I'm hoping that as a regional, when we get together with other cities and we start discussing other potential ways of getting sand on our beaches, that, in fact, that will happen. But at this time, and this item, I don't, I can't, I can't vote yes. Councilmember Jensen?
At this time, we're just requesting a study, just more information, which could include the bacterial levels in the water as well. I know we have a homeless encampment that drains into the ocean, and maybe we could at that time, too, also determine the human waste and what that's doing to the coast right there. So, I mean, I think it's fair to ask for a study to be done and determine the feasibility of a section of beach for a specific amount of time, at a specific time during the year, where people could take their dogs. That's it.
Let's vote.
Kaim Sanchez, no.
Do we have any communications for the public regarding items not on this agenda?
Yes, we have three registered speakers.
Okay, can we hear from them?
For off-agenda items, our first speaker is Jimmy Naught, to be followed by Joel West, to be followed by Sandra Martinez.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Naught, 127, Sherri Lane. Just want to take and summarize just one thing, and that is, thank you. People don't realize what the city council member and mayor has to go through in preparation for each and every meeting. I wish there was a video that you could show, because people don't realize, you have to read documents about three inches or better for each meeting. In the past, what's happened is, some council members have selected key community members from both sides of the opinion on what has become in our city normal. And I would encourage you, as council members, to please continue that. Taking opinions on whatever side of the issue that may come before you, to get that opinion before you consider it and you bring it to the council by itself, because that way you can prepare better. And whether it's in your district, to take and say, let's take and consider what the item is. This way, you would be better prepared for the public in getting in a lot of information. And I want to thank you for what you've done in the past, and what other council members have done in the past, and it's helped using that preparation. Also, I want to thank you for all that you do in your districts. This is something that we have not done in the past, having districts, and something new. And I think this is something the public needs to know about. With the new way that it's going to be done on to Cox Cable, if you look at the channel lineup, it's something that's going back to the way it used to be, where the public can turn into Channel 18 and 19 on the channel lineup, and there it is. Something that they can take and easily access. I would encourage you, and encourage the public, to participate a lot better and a lot easier, so that all the community can, and also online, as you have done in the past. So once again, thank you for all that you've done, and I encourage you to sunshine it better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joel West?
Joel West, Save SouthO. In a quote often attributed to Mark Twain, in 1897, newspaperman Charles Warner said, "Everybody talks about the weather. Nobody seems to do anything about it." Today, we will be here late because Oceanside residents are frustrated by the state overriding the right of local officials such as yourself to make decisions about the nature of our community. At a time when many couples and families want to buy a single-family home, powerful Sacramento politicians are hoping to eliminate them because they are immoral. Likewise, on November 17th, this council declared its strong opposition to the practice of the legislature of passing multitudes of bills that directly impact and interfere with the ability of cities to control their own destiny. What can we do about it? The only solution on the horizon is the Brand Huang Mendoza Tri-Partisan Land Use Initiative, also known as Our Neighborhood Voices. It was launched by a coalition of elected officials and community activists who reversed state control of our local land use decisions. I and others will be gathering signatures in Oceanside as part of a statewide effort that will put it on the November 22 ballot. However, that's only half the battle. We also need to explain to Californians why this measure is essential for the future of all residents. So if you don't like the idea of state usurping local control, don't just talk about it. Let's do something about it. Save SouthO appreciates the support of anyone and everyone in restoring the rightful role of local governments such as yourselves to decide what kind of community we will be allowed to live in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra Martinez?
It's magic. I'm Sandra Martinez. Thanks for the opportunity. That went fast. I'm here to talk about vaccine adverse events. Here's a slide from the FDA that lists a sundry, about 21 of them. There are a lot more. This is a young woman who got the Pfizer vaccine. She's been struggling with neurological problems ever since. Very common reaction. There are thousands of these people that have had this problem. Here's a young man, also, neurological problems. He's no longer able to vocalize. He's trying to get the word out, water here at this point. And this is not uncommon. Well, it's uncommon, but it's not rare. Another man, having a neurological reaction to his vaccine. It's very sad. These were previously very, very healthy people, all young people. Another woman, she had her Madonna shot. This was her reaction. Currently, we've had 1.2 million adverse reactions in this country that have been recorded. This young woman also had, I believe she was Pfizer. She came online just to share her story. People think she's making it up, but she's not. She was one of the first people that was affected back in January. 1.2 million adverse reactions, 20,000 deaths. This young man received the JNJ, became paralyzed a week after. He's being told he'll be able to go out of the hospital in a month, but he'll be paralyzed. 1.2 million adverse reactions, 20,000 recorded deaths, probably about 10% of the actual number. These two girls call themselves the Tremor Twins, even though that's in Russian. They're American. They happen to live in the same neighborhood, so they've bonded over this. It's in Russian because it's been censored off the American internet. This one young woman is just struggling, just to stand, again with the neurological The CMS database, which is Medicare, reports 45,000 deaths within three days of the injection. And here, they're trying to normalize it for children. Kids have strokes, too. Here's a young girl that had a stroke after her shot. Her family's asking for prayers. 120 children are hospitalized, and for the first time in this woman's career, she's taking care of an eight-year-old boy in the ER with a cardiac event. Do not support these bioweapons. I hope you don't either. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is that the last?
And that concludes the registered speakers for off-agenda items.
And I do want to thank Councilmember Rodriguez for reminding me to put my mask back on. So thank you very much. And a mask doesn't involve vaccines, so we've been asked to go in masked indoor gatherings for, from December 15th to January 15th, I think, is the 30 days. All right, we're going to go ahead and begin with our public hearing items. It is 6 o'clock, time certain. Going to start with item number 27. Item number 27 is adoption of a resolution approving the revision to the Housing Choice Voucher Administrative Plan and authorization for the chair or designate to execute all related documents. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing, request disclosures from commissioners regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff only.
Staff only.
Staff only.
Staff. All right, we're going to begin with, oh, excuse me. Do we have any correspondence and our petitions? Mr. Navarro?
The city clerk's office has not received any correspondence on this item.
Thank you. Okay, now, we're going to begin with testimony, and that is with Sal Salvador Roman, management analyst. Mr. Roman?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Salvador Roman. I am management analyst with the Neighborhood Services Department, and today I will be presenting on the Emergency Housing Voucher, or EHB, and recommending the formal approval of the revised admin plan to include the EHB program. Staff recommends that the Community Development Commission adopt a resolution approving the revisions to the Housing Choice Voucher Administrative Plan and authorize a chair or designate to execute all related documents. A little bit of background, on May 5th, 2021, HUD issued Notice 2021-15, announcing the EHB program funded by the American Rescue Plan Act. 70,000 emergency housing vouchers were awarded nationwide. In San Diego County, four housing authorities were awarded, Oceanside being one of them, with 43 vouchers issued. Some of the unique or special requirements from the EHB program, as described by the notice, are that funds will be appropriated until September 30th, 2030. After September 30th, 2023, EHB vouchers may not be reissued, meaning if we, for whatever reason, a program participant is terminated, we no longer have that voucher. And all referrals must come through the coordinated entry system. The notice also outlines the population eligibility requirements to be the following individuals and/or households. Anybody who's homeless, at risk of homelessness, or fleeing a domestic violence or human trafficking situation. In addition to the outlined eligibility requirements, staff incorporated a local preference and identified priority populations listed on the slides to ensure that the EHB program assists our most vulnerable residents experiencing homelessness. These significant changes in the proposed Housing Choice Voucher Administrative Plan are located in Chapter 4. The changes are to add a Art 4 to Chapter 4 to include the operational and implementation requirements for the EHB program. On September 15th, 2021, staff presented to the city council and announced the start of our comment period for the proposed administrative plan. On that same day, September 15th, the draft plan was made available to the general public through different media outlets and in person at the housing authority. One of the modalities was through the city website, and it included a survey. That survey asked for if the general public agreed with the priority populations. There was 25 responses. 22 of them, or 88%, agreed with the priority populations, and three respondents did not. However, they did not provide any alternative recommended priority populations, and there was no additional feedback received. Staff also announced the public hearing for today, December 15th, 2021, to allow public Staff recommends that the Community Development Commission adopt a resolution approving the revisions to the Housing Choice Voucher Administrative Plan and authorize a chair to designate or designate to execute all related documents. And that is it, and I'd be happy to entertain questions at this time. Thank you.
Do we have any requests to speak on this?
We do not have any speakers registered for this item.
Okay. This is a time for the public to comment on this item. This is a public hearing. You do not have to have registered previously to be able to speak. You can approach the podium, identify yourself, and speak for up to three minutes. I see no one rising. I'm going to close this portion of the public hearing, and I did have one question. I didn't see youth on the list. Homeless youth, which, as I understand, are another high, highly vulnerable part of the population, the homeless population. Was that addressed elsewhere?
So the youth could be incorporated or included as part of anybody with a permanent disability. It doesn't have to be the main household, as well as any dependent children, and they don't necessarily have to be youth. They could be TAs, but we include that as part of the priority population.
So 18 and over are still part of the priority population?
If they have a permanent disability, they can be, yes.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Kaim?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the revision.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you for the presentation. The demand is huge, and the vouchers are just a fraction of the need, and so I'm glad we've identified our policy. I know the city staff work hard to help as many individuals as possible. With respect to the underage 18, I know personally, I was homeless as a youth under 18, and there's some legal dynamics if they're an adult or they're not, and there's different funding sources, which there's definitely significantly more funding sources for those that are under 18 under different programs. But definitely, the, you know, youth, I look at my kids that are 18, 19, 20, they're a kid to me, so definitely would like to have, you know, them as a part of that group. But I'm thankful for this, these vouchers and this amount, and we'll keep fighting the good fight to get as many people off the street as possible that need this. So thank you.
Was that a second? Okay. So I'm going to support this, but I would like to add youth to this list, because I understand that many, many times, the reason why we don't really see them out there is because they do couch surfing. But where they do couch surfing can be very vulnerable, and if there's nothing for them at all, and to continue doing it, and even possibly a stranger that they just met, I at all, and to continue doing it, and even possibly a stranger that they just met, I think that this is a highly vulnerable part of our homeless population as well. So, thank you very much. No other requests to speak.
Motion approved. Five oh.
Thank you. Next public hearing item is item number 28, for which I think most of you are here. And that is the adoption of a resolution, and this is the appeal, okay? So, adoption of a resolution upholding the Planning Commission's adoption of Resolution Number 2021-P30 for approval of the tentative map, development plan, regular coastal permit, and density bonus to construct a four-story mixed-use development consisting of 54 condominium units and 3,244 square feet of ground floor commercial space located on an approximate .91 acre site at 1602 South Coast Highway within the South Oceanside Neighborhood Planning Area. The applicant is Hallmark Development Corporation. The appellants are Carrie Lasko and Sherri Mackin. I'm going to go ahead and open up, open this public hearing and request disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff, the developer and their representative, and I have also met with several of the neighborhood groups and individuals.
Okay. Staff, members of the public, I've received emails, as well as have discussed this by phone, and that's it, I guess.
Staff, members of the public, the builder, and representatives.
Staff, public applicant.
Thank you. And Councilmember Rodriguez? All right, when he comes back, we'll ask him for his disclosures. Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
The city clerk's office has received correspondence, but all the correspondence has been forwarded to council prior to this meeting.
Okay. So, we're going to first begin with testimony from staff. Once staff is completed its presentation, then we'll be hearing from the appellants. And that is, those are the people who appealed the decision of the Planning Commission, which approved this project, this Hallmark project. That would be for up to 20 minutes. The then applicant would have an opportunity, if they so wanted, if requested, to speak for up to 20 minutes. The appellants, the folks who appealed the decision of the Planning Commission, can reserve time for rebuttal. The applicant cannot. The applicant could, you know, and both parties, of course, could be asked questions from the dais. And so, we're going to go ahead and begin, as I said, with staff. And so, we have Scott Nightingale, Senior Planner, with a presentation. Mr. Nightingale?
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, council members, members of the public, I'm Scott Nightingale from the Planning Division, here to present Agenda Item Number 28 for the consideration of an appeal for the Planning Commission's action by approving a mixed-use development at 1602 South Coast Highway. The applicant is Hallmark Development Corporation, and the appellant, Carrie Lasko. Staff recommends that the city council affirm the action of October 11th, 2021, and uphold the Planning Commission's approval of the tentative map, development plan, regular coastal permit, and density bonus for the mixed-use development for the 54 residential condominium units with five units dedicated to very low-income housing and a 3,244 square foot ground floor commercial space as specified in the Planning Commission Resolution 2021-P30, as attached in Exhibit A with the staff report. There are modifications to the resolution that we have included as a part of the resolution for this: removal of Condition Number 118 regarding the community facilities district requirement. Because the city has yet to approve the annual rates through the council approval, this is the reason for the removal. We ran this by the fire division, and they were open to removal. And an addition of a new condition, Condition 106I, a provision that units may be rented for no less than 30 days. That would be the action for tonight. Subject: Project located at 1602 South Coast Highway at the southeast corner of Moore Street and South Coast Highway. Project is Zone C2, General Commercial, and is within the non-applicable district of the coastal zone. The C2 district allows for commercial uses as well as mixed-use development, as proposed here. Little background on the project: On September 27th, the Planning Commission voted 2-2, a tie vote, which resulted in a continuance of the project to annex regular scheduled Planning Commission meeting, which was scheduled for October 11th, 2021. On this continued meeting, staff prepared an eight-page memorandum for the Planning Commission that discussed the background of the previous meeting and additional information regarding the city's limited discretion under the state density bonus law and the Housing Accountability Act, as well as an analysis of the density bonus law as it relates to the Coastal Act, and responses to the public comments, as well as the motion made by the Planning Commission. And at this meeting, the Planning Commission voted by a 5-1 vote to approve the project. The subject appeal we have in front of us tonight was filed on October 21st, 2021, filed by the clerk's office by Carrie Lasko, the appellant, cited several reasons for the appeal, which are discussed not only in the staff report, but listed here as follows: public safety concerns, parking concerns, well, the short-term vacation rental concerns, noncompliance with Coastal Act and local coastal program, precedent set on South Coast Highway, commercial uses, transitions from the R1 neighborhood, from C2 to the R1 neighborhood, and concerns regarding walkability. Before we go into the concerns, I'm going to give a little info on the state density bonus law. The state density bonus law requires that all cities grant density bonuses and incentives and waivers of development standards for projects that contain a percentage of affordable housing. This project is providing five very low-income units, which is actually 11% of the allowable density, which is 40 dwelling units per acre for this specific size of lot, which enables the developer to increase the density by 35%. But with that, he gets an additional, 14 additional units. So, when calculating that out, it comes out to 54 units, which we are seeing today. This state law prohibits cities from denying any waiver unless findings are made that the waiver would have a specific adverse impact upon health, safety, or physical environment for which there is no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid the impact. A specific adverse impact is defined as a quantifiable impact based on objective identified within public health or safety standards. The applicant is approved for two waivers, which are setback waivers, which is described in the staff report. And lastly, under the State Housing Accountability Act, if the project complies with the objective general plan zoning and subdivision standards, but the city proposes to reduce the density or disapprove the project, there must be written findings supported by the predominance of the evidence that both the following exist. These are the reasons if a denial, to deny a project: the development would have specific adverse impact upon health or safety unless denied or reduced in density, and there is no feasible method to mitigate the adverse impact other than denial or reduction in density. Based on the findings and statements made in the staff report, the project meets, and in many instances exceeds the development standards with no adverse impact on public health and safety, based on the quantifiable data that staff has reviewed. Let's go into the listed concerns. First concern, public safety concern. There was concerns regarding the Freeman issue regarding traffic. Technical reports indicate that the project meets site distance standards. For our transportation director, they stated that there is a site distance requirement when leaving or entering a driveway of 150 feet. This project provides a site distance of at least 155 for any motorists coming in and out of the driveway there. In addition to that, there is a total of a 12-foot parkway, so five-foot sidewalk and seven-foot parkway on Freeman that they will propose, which provide an additional buffer for any motorists looking up and down the street to enter or leave the garage. Another concern was the overall traffic counts were skewed. Traffic data provided accurate conservative counts for the city traffic engineer, as well as a 1.5 growth factor multiplier to ensure impacts would not be significant. Another concern was parking. This project, the governing parking regulations here is the state density bonus parking, which requires .5 spaces per unit. And if you see in the third column here, they have a two-bedroom unit, three-bedroom unit, so that would come out to 27 plus, I'm sorry, yeah, 27, plus the 11 would give you 37, 38. They are exceeding that with the 77 proposed. The zoning ordinance requires one space per unit, which would require 54 spaces, one space per each unit. They will also provide two guest spaces. And in addition to that, the 11 required commercial spaces for the zoning ordinance will be available on non-business hours for the resident, and that will be established within their HOA agreement with the residence. Also added, curb cuts to the sidewalk off of Moore Street. By adding the new right-of-way curb gutter sidewalk, there now will be opportunities for legal parking along Freeman Street. And in addition to that, the existing curb cuts off of Moore Street will be removed, which will also free up and allow for additional parking opportunities for the public and the residents. There was a concern regarding the short-term rental. If this site would be short-term rented, staff has added a condition to actually prohibit rentals less than 30 days. We've brought this up to the applicant, and they've agreed to the condition. Another concern was noncompliance with the Coastal Act. Density bonus projects must be harmonized, this is based on the law, and shall be permitted consistent with the Coastal Act per AB 2797 per density bonus law. Project does not impact any coastal resources, public parking west of the railroad or public views. The existing access down Moore Street will still remain. They're actually improving it for providing more ADA-compliant sidewalk and removing the curb cuts. And also, the project's bulk and scale will be compatible with the surrounding area. There are nearby buildings with portions up to four stories, and the 42 proposed building height is permitted under the zoning ordinance. The requirement here is 45. They're proposing a building height of 42 feet. Here's some surrounding developments within the area that show in projects two to three stories, which range from 35 to 36 feet, with additional appearances that give the impression of a third to fourth story. And based off the surrounding developments, staff found that the project is compatible not only the general plan for land use compatibility, but with the neighborhood and the surrounding developments. As you can see here, this is coming up South Coast Highway as you reach, as you go up towards Moore Street. The buildings look and give the impression of a four-story building. And as you move up closer to Moore Street, this building will be consistent with exactly what's across the street in terms of bulk and scale. But based off that, like I said, staff found that this project is consistent with the neighborhood and land use compatibility and the local coastal program. And there's also some apartments just located west that are two to three stories. Another concern was commercial uses, concerns with the operations of the commercial uses, the impacts, and impacts to parking. All the commercial uses that come into this site will be subject to a business license, which planning will review to ensure that it meets zoning standards as well as general plan compliance. If there is a use that requires a use permit, it will be reviewed per the commercial parking regulations or the regulations and ratios for the ordinance. Another question or concern was transition from the commercial Coast Highway District to the South Side Neighborhood, the R1 District. Staff worked with the applicant to reduce the massing and provide articulations in the building facade, not only the facade, but the actual skyline views, the vertical articulations as well, to provide some relief not only to Coast Highway, but to the R1 District as you drive in here. Originally, this project came in as more of a boxy-type development with darker colors. During some of the public meetings, there were some concerns regarding the project not being consistent with the beach theme that we're looking for, some of the residents that we're looking for. We lightened up the colors. We provided some additional articulations, materials. The corner was actually cut off, in a sense. We reduced the third story there to provide more of a pedestrian feel on the street, as you can see the roof deck there. So, the applicant has really worked with staff to address a lot of the concerns regarding the design and the bulk and scale. And lastly, Freeman Street, the 12-foot parkway creates a buffer to the adjacent single-family homes that have garages abutting and actually acting as a rear yard off of Freeman. But with this development, there was some concerns that the project asking for the waiver off of Freeman was going to shadow some of the residential areas and be right up to the property line. That's not the case. They are asking for a zero-foot setback, but there will be a relief from the street. They're providing a five-foot sidewalk and also a seven-foot parkway with landscaping. Another concern was walkability. And staff's response to that, the new sidewalk that will be installed along Freeman, as well as Morris, and Coast Highway will be ADA compliant. It will provide a free walkable trail towards the ocean. Will keep the public view and public access will still remain. And also, the three frontages will also be landscaped and beautified with landscaping in the parkways, which will not only beautify the site, but as well as the neighborhood. But with that, staff recommends that city council affirm the action of the Planning Commission on October 11th, 2021, and approve the tentative parcel map development plan, regular coastal permit, density bonus for the mixed-use development, and overturn the appeal, and also remove Condition Number 118, 118, and add the Condition 106I. That concludes our presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So, we'll now go to the testimony of the appellant, those that appealed the decision of the Planning You're going to have 20 minutes, up to 20 minutes, and you can reserve time for rebuttal. Carrie?
Hi. My name is Carrie Lasko. I live at 1001 California Street, 9205. I've been a resident for over 40 years. I have been present to several meetings regarding the Hallmark Development and firmly asking for consideration as to the increase of traffic of this project on the corner of South Coast Highway and Moore Street. Safety, safety, safety has been my biggest concern. This project on the corner of South Coast Highway and Moore Street with this waiver of the 15-foot setback is a serious concern for kids, walkers in our community going to the South Oceanside Elementary School on Freeman, via Freeman Street. Kids are coming from west of South Coast Highway, north of Oceanside Boulevard to the school. There are no sidewalks, very little on the intersections of Freeman and Moore Street, which adds to the unsafe roadways for kids and walkers through the school and community, not to mention the obvious and massive parking it will add on the streets, creating blind spots on Moore Street and the adjacent streets leading into Morris, meaning Freeman, Alvarado, Dittmar, Nevada Streets. Let us be aware that Primal Market is a busy business with traffic coming and going all day long, which is adjacent to the Hallmark Development. So, the delivery trucks create a difficult problem for safety as well. With this high-density living choice and encouraging bikes as a safe choice for transportation is so lacking in responsible follow-through of the laws and rules of safety, most kids are given this option of transportation with little experience as to the safety of the roadways. The city does not create a safe and secure infrastructure. The city does not create a safe and secure infrastructure for transportation via walkability and bicycling. We need to focus on the safety of the communities walking past safe bike lanes before you consider high-density living in this community. Then we add electric bikes in the mix, which have a higher speed component and a greater opportunity of increased liabilities to the city of Oceanside, for they are responsible for a safe path to the schools. The city does not enforce proper laws and guidelines that considers the human factor of safety. I consider that we have to allow more, I understand, I'm sorry, I understand we have to allow more living opportunities and low-income housing in our communities, but let's be respectful to how the integrity of the community has been. Adding 54 units with one and a half parking spaces per unit is not realistic.
Carrie, could you just stop right there? Stop her time? Can you stop her time right now? It was, I believe it was like 1710. First of all, I wanted to give opportunity for Councilmember Rodriguez to do his disclosure. My apologies, I saw you, but then I didn't see you, so I don't remember what time you came in.
Yeah, staff and the public, thank you. And the developer.
Do you recall what time you came in?
Like, five minutes ago, so.
Okay, about?
6:25.
About 6:25, okay, for the record. Is there? Okay. My apologies to you, Ms. Lasko. I'm going to go ahead and let you complete your comments, and then we're going to stop. Is there a need for a break?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So we're going to go ahead and, let me ask you, would you prefer to continue at this time and finish your comments or take the break? Because I am concerned that people will forget what you're saying.
Well, I only have two more sentences.
Okay, let's allow you to give those two more sentences, then we'll take a break and make sure that the clock stops.
I'll just start at the paragraph. So, "I understand that we have to allow more living space opportunities and low-income housing in our communities, but let's be respectful to how the integrity of the community has been. Adding 54 units with one and a half parking spaces per unit is not realistic. It's not unreasonable to ask for less units, so the new residents of the Hallmark Development are not as frustrated as the present residents of the community are as well. I don't believe that we are being unreasonable. We are being advocates of preserving a community that has supported Oceanside in their best interest always. We want you to hear that safety is our primary argument, so adding more vehicles through the community creates an unsafe environment for traffic control and walkers to the school." Thank you for listening to me.
Stop the clock there. Okay, how much time do you need? How much time do you need?
Two before I proceed. Well, the problem is.
I think there's a video issue, right? Is that what I'm picking up? Okay. So let's take a break for five minutes. Let's take a break until 20, 20 before the hour. Going to wait. Going to go ahead, resume. Thank you very much. We'll start the timer when you start speaking again. You now have 16 minutes, 17 seconds.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, this is just a little video kind of depicting South Oceanside. I love the place we live. I'd like to keep it that way. It's walking down from Lincoln Middle School. Of course, we are on California Street now. So, it's traffic never seen. It's a micro. Great intersection of Morris and Coast Highway. Of course, going onto the diet. And Morris and Freeman. There's a baby next door. People coming to go up and back. It's where clarity, it's where the bike and Primos Market and our baby parks. Primos without our baby, but teenagers that hang out there, especially on Taco Tuesday
My name's Sherry Mackin, and I'm here with the appellant. SEQA. The grounds for appeal is that substantial evidence does not support the conclusion that the project will not result in any significant effects related to traffic noise, air quality or water quality, which is a required finding in order to qualify for a Class 32 categorical exemption pursuant to SEQA. The neighborhood feels strongly there should be more traffic studies conducted. The neighborhood asked that and due to the number of units and the change in use at South Freeman and Morris Street, parking garage entrance and exit, that the traffic study be pushed further into the neighborhood to encompass California, Morris, Whaley and Dittmar Streets, the developer refused. The data slash counts used for the analysis were taken in 2020, of course, the COVID year, and in our slow months with no tourists, and use the analysis along with data from the Coast Highway Vision Plan and a multiplier. That is not real-time data, and its situation merits real-time situation data. We ask for more traffic studies to be conducted and expanded into Whaley, California and Dittmar Streets. Adding one Class 3 bike route sign along the project is an insult to all who live in the vicinity. Significant traffic issues already exist at this intersection due to the increasing lack of parking and heavily use. Morris Street carries a LOS of E and cars traveling around at high speeds in search of parking space, especially those immediately adjacent family neighborhoods. This project will contribute or compound safety and parking problems significantly. Section 15300.2 speaks of cumulative impact. All exceptions for these classes are inapplicable when the cumulative impact of successive projects of the same type in the same place over time is significant. The landlord, HP Investors for the current tenants at 1602 Coast Highway, is also the new landlord for the current tenants in the Blade Building. There's a pattern of land purchases in South O, and the cumulative effects of these projects are not being addressed but need to per SEQA. Staff states in an October 11 memorandum to chair and members of the planning commission regarding concern five. South Freeman Street, zero-foot setback. It should be noted that the existing building along South Freeman Street has a zero-foot setback, so the project is proposing to place the building in the same location, and thus, no change from its current condition exists. Nothing could be further from the truth. Although the current building is at zero setback, the current use does not allow for ingress or egress from the back of the building. A zero-setback waiver for this project means cars will exit the parking garage onto a sidewalk rather than onto a parkway buffer. Therefore, anyone trying to walk, push a stroller, ride a bike, or jog past the entrance will be subject to being hit by a car exiting the parking garage, like what happened to Logan. Should the developer be granted the zero-setback waiver, it would have a specific adverse impact on safety as proven by the devastating and untimely death of Logan Lipton, with drivers pulling out onto a sidewalk rather than a parkway with zero to little line of sight. In fact, the city created a safety policy, and the council approved said policy with the dedication of the Oceanside Safe Routes to School Plan respectfully dedicated to the memory of Logan in February of 21. That plan looked at road characteristics, public opinion, data, and utilized behavior observations. School boundaries and safe routes to school. South Oceanside Elementary School boundaries are from Highway 76 to the Buena Vista Lagoon and I-5 to the coast. Lincoln Middle School and Oceanside High have similar boundaries, however, expand eastward. The proposed project is situated within half-mile radius of South O Elementary School. Since the development site is within a half-mile of South O Elementary School, the Safe Route to School Plan, or SRTS, and MAP are key to parent concerns, are road characteristics as frequented by parents, public opinion, and observations of vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian behavior. If you would, please, the overhead. Data from 2012 and 2017 found the Oceanside Safe Routes to School Plan show medium concentration of bicycle and pedestrian-involved collisions around the area of the development site. The top collision factor for all areas is right-of-way violations at 44%. According to a pre- and post-program parent survey, unsafe intersections and speeding traffic along routes were parents' biggest concerns. The data shows that concerns revolve around vehicular use. Additionally, the level of traffic stress analysis in the SRTS shows that Freeman, Morris, and California are all rated as Level 2, not comfortable, in the analysis which seems appropriate, especially when one considers that Morris to Freeman has been ranked as an E, and E does not stand for excellent for level of service. Okay. Please, the following graph depicts the collisions by type in the half-mile radius, as well as the red circle indicates the development area. 11 unsafe speed, 19 right-of-way violation, improper turn, 23 DUI, 10 other improper movement, 2 bicycle-involved collision, 8 pedestrian-involved collision, 5. Please note, South Oceanside Elementary radius has the third highest number of collisions out of 32 schools in this district, out of all the schools in our district. Additionally, parents do not allow their child to walk to from school site unsafe intersections and speeding traffic along the route where their biggest concerns. Thank you, Jimmy. Next one. The blue lines depict the safe route to school for Lincoln Middle School and South Oceanside Elementary. According to the safe route for school, Lincoln students are to ride on Morris until Alvarado, then transition onto California Street. There are several points of ingress/egress along their path on Morris Street and a significant amount of traffic, trucks and cars parked on this route. It can be very scary for kids, especially since there are no bike lanes on any of those streets. South O Elementary and Lincoln Middle School were found to have significant gaps in sidewalks, forcing students to cross a major roadway or create unsafe changes of direction travel for students walking or biking to school. The development is within the red circle and part of the half-mile radius studied for the MAP. Thank you, Jimmy. Please note, all data collected for SRTS plan was taken during 2012 and 2017, long before the surge in 2020 and 21 in e-bike use. The pandemic brought a phenomenon that did not exist during the traffic study for this project, a huge surge in people, young and older, purchasing e-bikes. As reported by Spectrum News, Pedigo reports 121 million in sales as coronavirus pandemic fuels the e-boom. According to Pedigo, the demand continues to this day. The pandemic fueled the growth of electric bike business in the last 12 months and throughout the coronavirus pandemic. June 21, NBC News reports, "Demand is so high that some stores can't restock themselves in time, but the e-bike boom is being met with mixed reactions as a crowd, coastlines, and communities grapple with safety concerns." NBC continues on August 17 in an interview with Principal Miriam Kramer. "So many students are riding their bikes to school that the spacious bike racks are now almost completely full. Students say they enjoy having the ability to go where they please. With the surge in e-bikes, we have seen a change in behavior through observing road users on California, Morris, Alvarado, and Freeman since 2020. Many children now commute to school on e-bikes and after-school. They ride their bikes to Primos, hang out at the outdoor dining tables, take turns hopping on and off their bikes, pick up and drop off other teenagers, cruise around the block, Alvarado to Whaley to Freeman. This brings to mind, should the council approve the zero-setback waiver with this danger lurking for them, a garage exit into a sidewalk? It is my understanding that business owners on Coast Highway as well as the city were sued due to the lack of line of sight and around the site where the accident occurred, where Logan lost his life. In addition, some business owners were forced to remove their walls, whereas others did it on their own accord. Why would it not be okay to block the line of sight along Coast Highway any longer than turn around and allow it here with the approval of a zero-setback waiver? Please do not grant the waiver the developers requesting on this street. It's a dangerously busy area. You saw pictures of how many large delivery trucks see service Primo every day of the week and how middle-school children frequent the area, lack of sidewalks, and the amount of accidents on record for 2021. We have seen up to four large delivery trucks at the same time being on the corner of California and onto Freeman Street. Thanks, safety first and line of sight, and please deny the proposed waiver for safety reasons." According to data from PRA provided by OPD, traffic collisions 2018 through 2021, accidents on Morris Street between Alvarado and Coast Highway have doubled between 2018 and 2019 and have continued to increase since then over four years. To date, accidents have increased by 400%. Although traffic counts in 432 showed counts decreased in 2020, of course, the COVID year, OPD data reveals accidents have increased from 2020 by 150% on Morris Street between Alvarado and Coast Highway. The data demonstrates the accidents that we have seen and lived with and how unsafe it's become in our neighborhood. It's clear that Morris Street from Coast Highway to Alvarado and Freeman has become an unsafe place to be, and that is why this project needs to be modified to exclude the 15-foot setback waiver. South O is unique, and it's the only neighborhood in Oceanside which has three direct routes on and off ramps of I-5. As the city is aware, we've had multiple severe accidents from people running stop signs, hit-and-runs, both auto and pedestrian, serious accidents in the dip as well as along Coast Highway at Morris. This has been acknowledged by the city by creating a road diet and adding a left-hand turn signal to the Coast Highway at Morris Street. And with all that, Morris is still considered an E level of service. Many cars on weekends block the intersection at Morris and Coast Highway while trying to edge into the road lane diet and downsize north of Morris Street, which causes a backup on Morris for up to two light cycles. Conversely, those who approach Morris Street from Coast Highway speed up high speeds to make the light and to end the lane diet. Others just use the red light to stop in the middle of the intersection. I would like to stop now and hold our time for rebuttal at 2:46.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have the applicant. Does the applicant wish to do a presentation? Do we have the applicant?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Dan Nebohm, the Lightfoot Planning Group, representing applicant, Hallmark Development. We don't have a formal presentation tonight. We would just concur with staff's report tonight that we think they've addressed all the applicant issues. We agree with the resolution as the conditions were listed in there, the amended conditions and the condition to have the 30-day provision on the rental of the units, and that'll be implemented through the CCNRs and the project as well. We're happy to answer any questions and address any comments you may have later.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so this is the time for the public to comment. You do not have to have signed up. Do we have anyone that's signed up, or folks that have signed up to speak?
We have 13 individuals that have signed up.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and begin with those 13, and then, once that's done, I will again ask if there's anyone else that would like to speak. You do not need to have registered previously to be able to speak at this time. So you will have up to three minutes to speak. Please provide your name and then go into your comments. Thank you very much. First?
Our first couple of people, and again, we have two podiums and hopefully some empty chairs in the front. Our first speaker is Ken Leighton, to be followed by Jimmy Knott, to be followed by Colleen Bulch, to be followed by Joel West.
Ken Leighton, South O, reminding you that in two previous planning commission meetings, the only persons to speak up in favor the only person to speak up in favor of this was some developer pal from Orange County. This entire Orange County neighborhood knows the high-density project with only a third of the parking it needs will destroy local businesses and our quality of life. The worst part of these fine people trying to save their neighborhood is that it's probably a done deal. I accept that there are certain council members whose whole reason for being here is to collect big bucks from developers, make Oceanside as urban as possible, and then take that money and run onto something bigger. What gags me is that Ryan Keim, who doesn't live in SouthO or Fire Mountain, panders like he cares about us. Why would a resident on Hunsacker Street, for example, go to the trouble of putting up this sign high up on a utility pole? It says, "Crooked Ryan Keim Wants 12 Houses Here. This is where eight new condos will replace a single-family home." Mr. Keim, you wring your hands and whine, gee, I wish we didn't have to do all this bad stuff, or give some passive, weak lip service of rejection to fishbox short-term rentals or this nightmare on Morris Street. The guy who put this sign up probably figured out that he who pays the piper calls the tune, that you took $20,000 from BIA and real estate PACs, and that developers like Zephyr and Howard Jacobs figured out greasing Ryan Keim's wheels is just the cost of doing business when they forked over $15,000 to your election. At our community meeting two weeks ago, you bald-faced lied to us about why we are even having this review right here, right now. This whole Hallmark disaster would have been brought for review by just two council members, and you knew the mayor would go for it, but you couldn't be bothered. Why? Because obviously, to some, it's because you're beholden to the developers who call the tune. You did not want this review. This review is only happening because of neighbors who know this development is happening, but that it does not have to be to bring high-density hell. For once, Mr. Keim, please show you're not a patsy for out-of-town developers who have figured out there's a lot of money to be made by funding spineless decision-makers who take campaign cash at the expense of neighborhood livability. Mr. Keim, you are supposed to represent SouthO. Please, please show some strong leadership. Thank you.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127 Sherry Lane, SouthO. Development should be ratio to scale, and it should be real life, not dreams that should be put out. You know, like, staff has a lot of dreams, which is good, but reality sets in. Sherry told you the facts. We have to look at what the real-life impacts are. People do not live like mice in a cage. You're taking 54 units and putting it onto .91 acres. Unless you have, like, seven stories tall, this won't work with what is being proposed. Now, the second thing is, is you look at parking. If this was real community parking infrastructure, the development would take and have to have a second parking structure or underground parking for this many people. You look at it, and then if these parking would take in complete for the community that's involved, you would have to have parking permits. If you have to have community parking permits, the developer and the residents should have to pay for those permits, not the residents. This is new development. This is not being required. Another thing is, is if it's a large-scale development, shouldn't all large-scale developments be mandated to develop their own parking structures? This is something that is being considered within all modern cities. Is Oceanside going to be a modern city or something from the relic of the past? We have to consider that. Anytime there's a new development, any new developer or group of developers should be mandated to have their own parking structure. You should take and make sure this is foremost in any developer's head. You have to have your parking structure along with your development, even if you have to come together to do so.
Colleen Bulch, to be followed by Joel West.
Honorable Mayor and Council, Colleen Bulch, SouthO. Section 15300.2 Sub B was brought up by me during the Planning Commission meeting, but not addressed ever by staff. The section reads that the cumulative impact, sorry, all exemptions for these classes are inapplicable when the cumulative impact of successive projects of the same type and the same place over time is significant. This is the very first building coming through for SouthO. This is going to set the precedent. And the bulk that has been proposed in SouthO, its size, scale, is way overboard. There are two other projects being proposed for SouthO currently in the planning stages, one on the 1800 block and one on the 1900 block. In addition, the old Blade Citizen Building has been recently sold. Two of these projects have the same developer as Hallmark. These owners and other speculators are watching to see what will happen with this project. This project will set the precedent for all future buildings in SouthO. Staff also should have done a secret review. It is imperative to make sure we get quality projects in the city. We are a themed area of Oceanside, and preserving the essence of the neighborhood is very important. In addition, this project does not conform to our LCP, nor Section 65915 of the Government Code. The Coastal Act requires that the visual qualities of the coastal zone shall be protected and that new development be cited and designed to be visually compatible with the character of surrounding areas. It also states that the city shall ensure that all new development is compatible in height, scale, color, and form with the surrounding neighborhood. Where the change to a more intensive use is proposed, adequate buffers or transition zones, such as increased setbacks, landscape barriers, or decorative walls shall be provided. Our zoning code states that the double-frontage lot shall, not may, provide a 15-foot setback on both frontages. With that said, the waiver for not having a 15-foot setback on Freeman should be denied. Safety is a huge impact on this neighborhood, as stated before. And I heard somebody say that the ADA sidewalks would be provided. Well, the drawings still show two big transformer boxes in the middle of the sidewalk on Morris. So I don't know how that works with ADA, but it won't fit a wheelchair currently. So if it's in the same place, the same way, you've created an ADA non-compliant sidewalk. With the time I have left, I'd like to show two drawings. Sorry, this is Primos. This is on probably a Tuesday or a Friday. This is also Primos. These kids go back and forth across these streets all the time. They have no regard for sidewalks, stop signs, cars. They're kids, so please take that into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Yes, I'm Joel West, Save SouthO. It's a long hearing, so I support the appeal. I'll briefly focus on just one topic. There's a contradiction between state incentives to build housing and then using that housing as short-term vacation rentals. I know some of you agree. The staff reports and the applicants say the project will be conditioned to not allow short-term rentals. But the form of that condition is the initial CCNRs or HOA rules. And as you know, the restriction in these CCNRs or rules can be amended anytime by a vote of the new owners. Therefore, I ask the council to back up this restriction by making it a deed restriction on the individual properties to have full disclosure to future owners. Second, I ask that you, to treat all projects the same way, I ask that you make this a policy going forward for similar projects approved under state incentives, so that everybody's treated the same, and also so that we save all the staff and community and applicant time going back and forth on this issue. Thank you.
Ms. Lasco, I see that you registered to speak, but you're the appellant, so... Okay, perfect. So we'll go on to our next speaker, Stacy Black, to be followed by Nancy Lesperance, to be followed by Richard Fox.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Sanchez. My name is Stacy Black, and I live at 1442 Marshall Street in South Oceanside. I recently completed my own little construction project in my house on Marshall Street. My original plan was to add about 650 square feet. Yet I was surprised to learn that I could only add 500 square feet. It was explained to me that because my house has a single-car garage, the limit was 500 square feet. Sure enough, buried in Article 31 of the zoning ordinance, there is a clause that limits the size of an addition. This limitation was never mentioned during my prior due diligence at the Planning Department, so I wasn't quite sure what to do at this point. I explained that in order to provide another garage space, there would need to be a waiver on the 20-foot setback from 20 to 15. Or alternatively, there would need to be a waiver on the 500-square-foot limitation. I was told, "Don't even try. It's a long, arduous process, and it will never be granted." So after some thought, I concluded that the ordinance was written for a reason, to prevent South Oceanside from turning into LA. So I went back to the drawing board. After a year and a half, I had my permit for the 500-square-foot addition. It was like winning something. As I was preparing to begin my little construction project, I learned that my next-door neighbors were starting their own project to construct a second house in their backyard. Now, keep in mind, they have this same exact house as mine, same lot size, same single-car garage. I don't know how they were able to get approval for this. Nevertheless, they finished the project. The tenants moved in, and owing to their coveted Sprinter vans and other vehicles, their house looks more like an RV park than a single-family home, precisely what Article 31 was attempting to prevent. So with regards to the setback waiver on 1602 Coast Highway, I say absolutely not. Every bit of this project is at the absolute maximum, maximum units, maximum stories, maximum height, and minimum parking. The setback ordinance was written for a good reason and shouldn't be waived simply out of the interest of profit. Please ask staff to go back to the drawing board, as I was required to, a plan that includes the proper setback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nancy Lesperance. I live at 1611 Alvarado Street. I've lived in Oceanside for 64 years. In regard to the development project at 1602 South Coast Highway, there are many concerns about a project of this size. First is the safety issue of the zero setback with the commercial and condo parking exiting directly onto the proposed sidewalk and not a parkway beyond the building structure. This creates a lack of line of sight for people on the sidewalk and a blind exit to oncoming vehicles, especially if there will be vehicles parked on the street on the sides of the exit. Another concern is the lack of parking. Morris Street, which, this is a photo of Morris, is already heavily impacted by local business and residents that don't have enough off-street parking. There has already been numerous times when I cannot park in front of my own home on Alvarado Street, especially during summer tourist season and special events, such as the recent grand opening of SouthO Brewing. The third concern is with traffic. Summer traffic on Coast Highway is a crawl now, and adding the 54 condo units to such a small lot will heavily impact the side streets here in SouthO. Also, we do have an elementary school here. Many families walk to school, and there are a few designated crosswalks in the neighborhood. Increasing the traffic flow and congestion creates safety risks to our children. Another point stated under the Housing Accountability Act, Government Code Section 65589.5 provides that the receipt of a density bonus pursuant of Section 65915 shall not constitute a valid basis on which to find a proposed housing development project when it is inconsistent, not in compliance, or not in conformity with an applicable plan, program, policy, ordinance, standard, requirement, or other similar provisions specified for this subdivision. This project is not the standard or conformity within our subdivision of Oceanside. The slides that were shown by staff prior that talked about standard and conformity did not show any of the homes on Alvarado Street whose backyards and garages are on Freeman. Those are single-family homes, and some are two-story. There are no three-story or no four-story. So please consider the integrity of South Oceanside, the charm, the family-friendly culture that are important to preserve, and a more suitable development, being less dense, will be more in line with our character. Thank you for keeping our neighborhood intact.
My name's Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Richard Fox, 1741 Serrano Street, Oceanside. We are not opposed to this project. We are opposed to the project's safety and precedence. With zero setback on Freeman Street, there's cause for public safety. A regular-sized automobile, like in the picture, must be all the way across the sidewalk to be able to have full sight distance each way of that sidewalk, even above the implied sight distance quoted in the plan. With many more people and electric bikes, this is a real hazard. I know bicycles are not supposed to be on the street, but look what happened in the past. There's been projects that were allowed by the city, and one resulted in the death of Logan Lipton. Here's another project that has huge potential of another accidental death of a child on the way to school or headed to Primos Market, another chance of litigation for the city. The sidewalk is not full-length yet, but it is in the safe routes to school in the future to be a full-length sidewalk. Besides the sidewalk sight distance, there are street sight issues where large trucks, delivery vehicles, need to be parked on Freeman Street, which blocks the sight distance to see uncommon traffic. The safety of waiving the 15-foot setback way overrides the danger of having a parking garage that exits out a wall at zero setback. Also, this project needs to have a secret review done because the cumulative impact of successive projects of the same type in the same place over time is significant. This project is not compatible with the neighborhood. There are no other four-story buildings in South Oceanside. Please do not waive the requirements for having 15-foot setback on Freeman Street, and please require a secret review of this project. Thank you very much.
Kevin Edwards, to be followed by Steve Baylog. Kevin Edwards, to be followed by Steve Balog, to be followed by Jane McVeigh, to be followed by Jan DeRozier.
Mayor, City Council, my name is Kevin Edwards. I live at 1912 South Freeman Street. Let's begin with the California Environmental Quality Act, passed in 1970, which translated means "sequoia," means everything. This project in six, at 1602 Pacific Coast Highway involves structural modifications. And I have come to learn that off-site modifications are much more difficult to bring about than onsite modifications. Examples of this are water lines for a four-story building require higher water pressure. Next, natural gas hookups require facility size for demand accommodation. Storm drains and sewer lines require expansions off-site for compliance with existing smaller runoff infrastructure. Contrastly, onsite, not known at this time, is a possible soil contamination from previous Referencing Concern Number 4C in the memorandum written on October the 11th cites "the height of the multi-existing buildings and structures on the project site are taller than adjacent single-family homes to the east that have garage rear yard access directly off of South Freeman Street. As such, no existing direct postal views shall be obscured with the addition of the project." What's missing is the shadow cast reference. Solar access must be examined for other buildings' obstructions. Sequoia mandates public dialogue, an exchange, give and take, not one-sided compliance because of the state building code says so. SouthO residents want improvement. Moreover, we do not want to push our city into a costly litigation with the state. With suggested SouthO revisions implemented, as example the 15-foot setback, we will embrace this coast project, Morse Project, and be proud that the city, developer, and community work together for a better Oceanside. No longer the best-kept secret in California, we have been discovered. Ask the developers.
Council, my name is Steve Balog, 1714 Alvarado Street. One of the streets with single-family homes, mostly single-family homes, mostly single-story adjacent to this project, East Coast Highway stretching down past Vista. And our concern is the precedent that this sets for other projects on Coast Highway stretching down south of Vista. I take issue with your staff's determination that this project qualifies for California Environmental Quality Act categorical exemption. The staff says there are other nearby tall multifamily developments, and therefore they conclude that this project is consistent with the neighborhood. They ignore most of the houses that are in the neighborhood nearby. They're only looking at two projects to the north. Staff, however, doesn't emphasize that none of those other residential buildings have four occupied floors. Sounds like they took a chapter out of a book I used to know about called How to Light With Statistics. In fact, I don't think anywhere on Coast Highway in Oceanside is there a building with four occupied floors, but this would set a precedent for future development in South Oceanside. The staff claims that this project qualifies for categorical exemption per Sequoia Guidelines, Article 19, Section 15332, for infill development. However, they seem to have ignored an earlier section, Section 15302, which are exceptions to categorical exemptions. In particular, Section B, which I will read to you, quote, "cumulative impacts." All exemptions for these classes are inapplicable when the cumulative impact of successive projects of the same type in the same place over time is significant. I think the staff report totally ignored that. Therefore, I respectfully ask that you, the council, ask your staff to go back and do a proper environmental analysis that takes into account all of the California Environmental Quality Act, Article 19. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, Jane McVeigh, 1604 South Dittmar. This project will have a detrimental effect on the neighborhood, and you do have the power to change it. SouthO was not built and does not have the infrastructure to handle the traffic, noise, congestion, and parking problems associated with this project. I participated in some of the onward Oceanside meetings regarding SouthO. I would direct your attention to the draft Community Vision Organizing Themes and Guiding Principles document dated August 2021. Principle 1 is to strengthen a sense of place. This project does not do that. Principle 2 is to preserve and enhance neighborhood character. This project does not do that. Principle 3 is to promote pedestrian and bicycle-friendly development, including, and let me quote, "more attention to architecture and urban design to foster context-sensitive development." This project does not do that. Principle 4 is to promote efficient use of limited land resources. It states, quote, "The city does not intend to pursue an increase in density allowances in existing residential neighborhoods. Should future state legislation require the city to allow attached housing in single-family zoning districts, the city will explore updated development standards and design guidelines that help minimize the function and visual impacts of additional housing density in these areas." The city has not done that. Principle 16 is to minimize noise impact. So this project does not comply with any of those visions as stated in your vision plan. Please send this project back to do the following: no waiver on a setback on Freeman. It is a blind corner with trucks parked in front of Primo's on the side streets, DAV trucks coming and going, middle-school kids hanging out with their e-bikes in the street, not just by the street, but in the street, cars parked routinely right up to the corner where you can't see to make a turn, and all of the elementary kids on the west side of I-5 now apparently go to SouthO School. So having no setback is a disaster waiting to happen. Now, although there's been a new condition that minimum 30-day rentals, I agree that this project should be deed restricted because even though the developer has stated that the existing CCNRs don't allow short-term rentals, CCNRs can be amended and changed once they're handed off to the owners. So there's a high likelihood, in my opinion, that these units will be bought by investors, they'll be turned into short-term rentals, and that will exacerbate the parking, traffic, and noise problems. And lastly, in the spirit of local control, which you do espouse, please consider a moratorium until you can develop the written quantifiable criteria to amend or deny these projects. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and honorable councilpersons. My name is Jan DeRozier. I live at 1213 Kirby Way. Zeb, thank you so much for pronouncing my last name correctly. I appreciate it. Sherry's going to help me here with putting on this video we have for your enjoyment. This video just goes through our neighborhood and shows you what's happening on a regular basis. You've heard from Sherry a lot of statistics, but this is not only statistics, this is real life happening. So I would appreciate it if you took a look at it and see what goes on. As you can see from the video, delivery trucks for Primo are not only on the road, the sidewalk portion, but they're also in the middle of the street because of cars parked at the curb. So now with other businesses, there's going to be additional trucks also. Thank you very much.
Mayor and councilmembers, thank you. My name is Emmett Albergatti, and I live across the street in Vista Del Mar across Morse from the proposed project. And I think that I get the feeling that staff has thrown up their hands and said, you know, the state requirements have tried to encourage housing, and you can do all these things that weren't permitted before, but, you know, everything's up for grabs now. And I hope you have the ability to take a second look at some of these issues. And I'm just going to concentrate on two things in in our project across the street that are really an issue. We have a two-car garage in every one of our 32 units, and some people have four cars. They have children, or renters, or collector cars, or whatever, and they park on on Morse. And we have six guest spaces. We are always taken up by people in our project. It's very frustrating. But in any case, parking's a huge issue for us, and this project is proposing 77 units total for the commercial and residential. If if we were to use the coastal code that exists right now, the project should have 119 units, which would be 42 additional from what they're proposing in the project. And I think it's essential that we got enough parking here because, I mean, right now, Morse and all the nearby streets within a block are taken up totally now, and this neighborhood for two or three blocks around is going to be inundated with cars from this new project if if it goes forward with the minimal parking that's there. And by the way, I worked as a developer my entire career and doing shopping centers, and I know about parking and so on. But anyway, one other issue is trucks, not just the trucks you saw in those pictures, but delivery trucks from UPS, FedEx, USPS, and Prime and Amazon. We have 40 trucks a day in our project. I don't even know if the garage is tall enough for these trucks to enter in the new project, and is there a parking space where they're pull over and be out of the way when they make their deliveries? I think that's a huge issue as well. And so I think this project should go back for reexamination on this and a bunch of other issues, but I just wanted to cover my hide buttons, and thank you very much.
That concludes the registered speakers.
All right. At this time, I will be asking for those who did not register to speak. You do have a right to speak. Come forward, give your name, and then you can speak for up to three minutes. Again, you do not have to have put in a sheet to speak. You can approach the podium, speak for up to three minutes, provide your name. Thank you. Ms. Kramer?
Carolyn Kramer, 904 Leonard Avenue, Oceanside. I'm a resident of Seaside, but I definitely support my neighbors in SouthO. A question was brought up, and if this developer truly wants to keep that rule about short-term rentals and no rentals less than 30 days, this property needs to be deed restricted, not a CCNR rule, which can be changed by an HOA. So if you truly want that to happen, it's really, truly a part of this project, it needs to be deed restriction, period. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Just approach the podium if you would like to speak.
There you go. One more person. Just provide your name, and you have up to three minutes.
Hi, Dolores Sabina. I live on Borough Street. I'm just submitting the petition. 145 signatures opposing this project.
Okay, thank you. If you can hand it to the city clerk, please. All right, so you know what, no one else approaching the podium, so I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and go back to the appellant. You have?
2:46.
Two minutes, 46 seconds to do any.
I'll go ahead and start, if I may.
Rebuttal.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to rebut. Staff not showing the entire surrounding neighborhood. I do have pictures on my phone of Alvarado Street, which is directly to the east of that project area, and those are all very modest homes, very modest homes, mostly one-story. Maybe a couple have an ADU on top of their garage in the back, and it kind of showed, didn't really show a true picture of the neighborhood. And secondly, with regards to those ADUs, residents on Alvarado Street have been burdened with deed restricting their ADUs since 1990, 85, 90, for no short-term rentals. So for goodness sakes, if the city can do that to someone in the neighborhood, their neighbors, it shouldn't seem like it'd be a problem to deed restrict the properties in these projects in a transit corridor to ensure that they are not vacation rentals and they're truly used for residential uses. So we would appreciate that. Sherry?
And I just wanted to add, some of the signatures on here also included people on Broadway and Tremont Street that have serious concerns because they realize that that's going to impact them as well. They're already struggling with parking in those streets because, especially on Morse and Tremont and Morse and Broadway, they're they're small apartment complexes, like six to eight, and they're already having parking problems. So they they were readily signing our petition as well. Thank you.
Okay, Seth, can you zoom in for me on this picture on the phone, please? Is that zoomed down?
There you go.
So as you can see, that house is directly behind where this project would be, directly to the east. Then we have another home here. This is on the, come on. Oh, there you go. As you can see, this is directly across the street from the previous picture I showed you. They're one-story houses, so let's take that into consideration if you want to talk about the scale of these properties that were created, basically all of them selling apartments.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's come to the council, and I'm going to start. Whatever happens with this, with whatever motion, I hope that the council will direct staff to reduce the height limit in South O to three stories rather than four. Obviously, this is the first four-story project that is being proposed. And it is not in character with the surrounding community. Certainly, saying that it looks like it's four stories doesn't, the other three stories are four story, looks like four stories, doesn't make it so. This is the first four-story that is being proposed in South O. So I would highly, highly recommend that my colleagues here direct staff to reduce the height to three stories. So, onto analysis here. I do feel, well, first of all, the standard of review is preponderance of the evidence. And I do feel that the criteria has been met. The development would have a very specific adverse impact upon the public health or safety unless denied or reduced in density. And all I heard tonight was a reduction in the density. And there is no other method to mitigate this adverse impact other than denial or reduction in density. This is precisely what they have been saying in their papers, basically started with public safety having to do with traffic, the traffic analysis, basically saying this traffic analysis was incomplete. It was not sufficient. It did not discuss the multiple schools and the daycares nearby. It did not discuss, you know, the very recent history of what happened here and the whole reason why there was a reduction of the lanes from four to two, that a young person died. And it is in this vicinity. So personally, I, immediately after that fatal accident, I walked that neighborhood. It is not a safe neighborhood at all. Obviously, we couldn't say that because of liability issues, but it is not safe. And we need to do more. We need to have crosswalks. We need to, we need to have wider sidewalks. And here we're saying actually zero setback. It's exactly the opposite of what we should be doing. So we have traffic and the insufficiency of the traffic study, and then saying this project will result in significant effects and impacts to traffic, negative impacts. So this really should never have qualified for Class 32 categorical exemption for SEQA review. It should not. And I am, I feel that there is a colorable claim based on those comments by the public that that is what they're saying. It did not qualify for this exemption. It should have been a bigger study. We have the hard evidence, evidence produced by the applicants regarding the accident counts. I would like for you to submit them to the city clerk regarding, you know, because it has to be in writing, so I need you to submit that. You recounted over and over again the problems with this, and it is cumulative. We see that these higher-density projects are being create, built. And so here's another one. We do have a very strong policy. It is a written policy. Was it in reaction to Logan being hit, an accident? And it was the safe routes to schools. It is a very hard policy for us. The LOS, the Level of Service, is E. And I think the parking is something that is in here as well. If this was reduced and we had more parking instead of less, I mean, the notion of including parking that is for a business, are you trying to destroy the business by saying, okay, you could have people parking there who live there? I mean, usually it's the opposite. You do not have people who live there using your commercial space because you need to have that space. You don't even allow your employees. I mean, businesses, they ask their employees to park farther away so that their customers can park nearby because that actually produces more business, more business activity. So I don't think, I feel very strongly that we should be having more parking. There was testimony after testimony after testimony during the various hearings on this, that people go around and around and around looking for parking space, creating even a higher danger of these accidents. Staff acknowledged in their report that this is in close proximity to the transit center. Well, this is, I think it has to be also acknowledged that this is not a walkable community. It could be one day. I hope it is. It doesn't have wide sidewalks, shade, safe crossing along the routes. In fact, generally, talking to staff, we all generally acknowledge that no one walks to the transit center. There are no reliable connectors to that mass transit. We are building, we are allowing buildings to be built high-density with minimal parking and sometimes almost negative parking in anticipation of the infrastructure. We should be putting the infrastructure there first. No infrastructure, no mass transit exists to support this high-density project. So we should not be waiving any of the parking requirements. And as to the Coastal Act, I do feel that lack of parking actually does impede coastal access. Basically, residents are taking up all the parking spaces and not, you know, it's not visitor-serving anymore. So, again, saying that all the others look like four stories is not enough. And I picked up from the staff report that, well, you know, South O character doesn't apply to Coast Highway. Of course it does. Yeah, just because it's called Coast Highway doesn't make it a highway. It is, and what we're trying to do is make walkable streets everywhere. That is what we're trying to do in the rest of the Coast Highway. We're trying to make it so that people will walk and people will ride their bicycles. And to say that this shouldn't happen here in South O is, you know, it's counter to our policies. There's a lot more that I'd like, that I would say. I'm down to two, almost two minutes, but I make, I move that we grant the appeal without prejudice. And, you know, let it go back and have it reduced down to size. So I would grant the appeal based on those findings. And that's it for now. Councilmember Rodriguez?
First, I want to thank the public for coming out. It's not easy to take time and come all the way down here and present your, you know, positions and feedback. I take it very seriously and I appreciate everyone for coming down here. We're in a really difficult predicament as a, as a local body making decisions on developments. We have a state and we have a regional political environment that wants to prioritize mass transit and penalize you driving your vehicle. All policies that point toward lowering GHGs and protecting our environment want to tax you highly to put fuel in your vehicles, okay? They want to eventually charge you for every mile you drive on our roads. And they want to focus development near public transportation so that you get out of your cars, sell your cars, stop using your cars, and get on the buses, get on the trains, and use mass transit for your entire daily life. And so these policies that are from state politicians, okay, that are also running Sandag, which I serve on, the majority on Sandag wants you to get out of your car, okay, and get on a bus. I disagree with that. But these are the policies that we have before us, that we have to deal with when approving developments. So the state says, we want you to build near transit, so we're going to give you incentives to create more units near transit so people get out of their cars. And if we assume they're getting out of their cars, then we can allow less parking because they're getting out of their cars, right? We're protecting the environment, right? We're preparing for climate change and sea level rise, right? So that's the dynamic we are facing with on a local level. And that's why we've had some speakers tonight talk about a ballot initiative, which I encourage all of you to get on board with, which would give more local control and get rid of the nonsense coming out of Sacramento and coming out of Sandag, because it's nonsense. You should have control. You should have a voice. And we shouldn't have our hands tied behind our back when a developer who's a business is trying to follow rules, okay, on parking that says, hey, you're within a certain, you know, distance from transit so you can have less parking spaces because we assume they're going to use public transit. They're following those rules. And they're given density bonuses because now they're including affordable housing, which is government-subsidized housing, okay? The government's covering the cost so that a low-income family can stay in that home. And that's great. We need more in low-income housing. Well, the state says we need more of it, so guess what? You can build more units. You can have more density. You could create more impacts in our local neighborhoods for those five units you're about to build, okay? Our staff, which I think have done a phenomenal job and thorough job of reviewing the concerns of the community and bridging those concerns with the developers' application and the requirements and restrictions that we have on a state and local level. They've done the best they can. We've brought it through the Planning Commission, which is an additional voice of the people that has approved this project. And you've moved on an appeal, which is your right, and I appreciate. But what we have before us is a project, and there will be many more because of the policies we have to face. There is going to be, under the redevelopment era, under SEQA during that period, a decade or so ago, there's almost 5,000 units approved for downtown. We still have 2,500 units to go, and those are all going to create impacts, and they're all going to have reduced parking, and there's going to be a lot of affordable, and we're going to have to take it one by one. And this is just one of many, and it's unfortunate. This decision is hard. I wish we could grant you all those dynamics and vote no. Well, what's going to happen is a lawsuit's going to come. The judge is going to say, look, you know, and the litigation's going to come out and it's going to go that route. I want to read this sentence, which, you know, if there are secret concerns, then there's a legal, you know, there's a legal pathway for anyone that wants to go down that route with a developer. But here tonight, one item I want to point out is finally, as noted during the Planning Commission's review, the Housing Accountability Act limits the city's discretion when reviewing proposed projects that comply with objective general plan, zoning and subdivision standards and criterias in effect at the time the application is deemed complete. Tonight, we have a development that has met all the requirements necessary. The overriding considerations were granted, you know, on par. If the Coastal Commission is upset or doesn't agree with this, then they're going to state those claims. But from our perspective and from my perspective, as an elected council member wanting to make the best decision for my city, I'm going to make a motion to support this project and move approval of staff's recommendations. Thank you.
First of all, this is not in the appealable area, so this is not going to be heard by the Coastal Commission, although I wish it would, but it's not in the appealable area. And secondly, there are, there is a basis for standard of review, and I believe that has been met. And secondly, thirdly, Councilmember Rodriguez, do you agree that we need to reduce the height to three stories in South O?
Reducing height reduces density, and we are a city that's moving toward infill development, which I hear, I've heard over 1,000 times at these meetings. And so to reduce height is reducing density, which is totally contradicting to our general plan and the state's current legislation.
This is South O, it's a historic, actually a historic district. If we were to declare it a historic district, these rules would not even apply to South O, period. And South O is one of the old neighborhoods from the early 1900s.
So nobody else's neighborhood is okay? The other side of Coast Highway doesn't have to have those same luxuries? That's not how this works. I love South O. It does have unique characters, but this project complies with all of those dynamics, and there's no reason for us to deny it tonight.
Deputy Mayor Keim?
First, I want to thank Mr. Layton for those words of encouragement, very inspiring as usual. South O is a unique part of the city that I've spent a lot of time in growing up. And as I've said, since I've been on council, that's part of our job, is protect the neighborhoods and the character of those neighborhoods, which is why it was important to me to do our resolution and push back on those state mandates, because these one-size-fits-all mandates for one of the biggest states in the country don't work. I mean, and I want to give, just put it in perspective. So across the street at Vista Del Mar, that developer could have built 98 units. Instead, they built 38. They additionally had two parking per unit. This project could have built 40, but with a state mandated density bonus, now they're proposing 54. What that translates to is 16.5 units per acre for the prior one versus 59 units per acre. So it shows that it's viable to do a project of that size across the street that fits the character of the neighborhood and also provides additional parking. So I have serious concerns with this project. And it's one of those things that just because you can do something legally, doesn't mean you should do it. And I think there's other ways to do this project that would fit with the neighborhood, that would be viable, but instead, we're going to maximize profit at the expense of our neighborhoods. And that's been a concern for me for the start. Again, just because you can do something, doesn't mean you should. I have a quick question for the city attorney. I listened to the mayor's motion. This is what I've heard from staff this entire process. I would love to have the discretion to change the parking, to change the density and change the height. Is her motion legally defensible in supporting that tonight? Is that a viable path forward?
Honorable mayor, members of the council, the question that you have to answer tonight is whether you have identified a specific adverse impact, which means a significant, quantifiable, direct and unavoidable impact based on written public health or safety standards. So you are ultimately the finders of fact with respect to that issue. But certainly, if we were to move forward with the motion as the mayor made, I don't think it was seconded. We would have to identify which of those written public safety or health standards apply. So certainly, deputy mayor, there would be a substantial risk of litigation. Yes, there's a substantial risk of litigation. I can't guarantee you the outcome of that one way or the other, but the state has made it extremely difficult for us to deny density bonus projects that comply with the objective requirements of the zoning and general plan. And this project, I think it's undisputed, complies with the objective requirements. So it shows that it's viable to do a project of that size across the street that fits the character of the neighborhood and also provides additional parking. So I have serious concerns with this project. And it's one of those things that just because you can do something legally, doesn't mean you should do it. And I think there's other ways to do this project that would fit with the neighborhood, that would be viable, but instead, we're going to maximize profit at the expense of our neighborhoods, and that's been a concern for me for the start. Again, just because you can do something doesn't mean you should. I have a quick question for the city attorney. I listened to the mayor's motion. This is what I've heard from staff this entire process. I would love to have the discretion to change the parking, to change the density, and change the height. Is her motion legally defensible? In supporting that tonight, is that a viable path forward?
Honorable mayor, members of the council, the question that you have to answer tonight is whether you have identified a specific adverse impact, which means a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on written public health or safety standards. So you are ultimately the finders of fact with respect to that issue. But certainly, if we were to move forward with the motion as the mayor made, I don't think it was seconded. We would have to identify which of those written public safety or health standards apply. So certainly, Deputy Mayor, there would be a substantial risk of litigation. Yes, there's a substantial risk of litigation. I can't guarantee you the outcome of that one way or the other, but the state has made it extremely difficult for us to deny density bonus projects that comply with the objective requirements of the zoning and general plan. And this project, I think it's undisputed, complies with the objective requirements. So really, the issue then is, can you find a specific adverse impact? And that will be, if you move forward with that path, likely to be litigated.
We could continue this hearing so that you can produce what was, based on what the testimony that was...
Can I finish, Mayor?
Yes, presented as well as the facts and the written materials. Go ahead.
So again, this concerns me too when we're moving to other projects, that this has one parking space per unit when that's the city's response to the density bonus. The state's is half a parking space per unit, so that's what we could have going forward. So this is what I anticipate for the next year, is, while this sets a precedent or not, this gets, the appeal gets granted, and the project doesn't move forward. We're still going to have to deal with those down the road. And I'm at the point with, I want the autonomy from our city to say, "This project doesn't fit in South Oceanside. We need more parking." This project would be fine in downtown. I think that parking, and I've approved those projects, and I've said that time and time again, I will continue to support density where density belongs and continue to support the quality and character of our neighborhood. So if we're saying, if I'm not hearing a definite no, that we can't move forward with the mayor's motion, I'm going to second it.
Okay. That's a second to my motion. Okay, Councilmember Weiss.
I have a couple of questions for staff. Both the mayor and the public raised the CEQA issue, and yet, in looking at the staff report and the items listed for appeal and staff's responses, it doesn't appear to me that the CEQA issue was even raised in the appeal.
Correct. Member Weiss, that's correct. It wasn't one of the items listed as it, for appeal.
So it's really not an issue for us tonight, since it wasn't part of the appeal?
Exactly.
Thank you. I also have a question, because a number of people raised the issue of roadway, bike, walkway safety. And yet, when I read the responses to that was raised, it appears to me that staff is comfortable, but there really is not a objective safety standard that is not being met. In fact, in your attachment four, it says, "As specified in the staff report and the project conditions, the project will not have an adverse impact on public health or safety."
That is correct.
"The project meets the zoning and density bonus provisions in terms of parking, building height, and story count, landscape provisions, and development standards, except for the two waivers." So given what you heard this evening, do you still stand by those statements?
Councilmember Weiss, yes. The project meets all development standards and actually exceeds them as well, so, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen.
Well, it's clear that it meets all of the requirements for, you know, the project, and South Oceanside is a unique community. I mean, my mom grew up at the corner of Tremont and Whaley. My grandma bought that house in 1947, okay? Oceanside has changed. It's grown. I wish we could go back to the 1950s and freeze it right there. I walked from that house to South Oceanside Elementary School. I know it's dangerous. It's always been dangerous. It was dangerous in the 70s, it's dangerous now, but nothing has changed. Nobody's addressed that issue before. It's never even been brought up before, the safety of walking to school from that area. So that is an area of concern, and the safe walks to school really needs to address that. And from the pictures of the trucks, it looks like all those Primo deliveries are a problem as well. And I didn't realize that Primos had so many delivery trucks coming at the same time. So maybe there needs to be a schedule for trucks. I don't know. There's a lot of different issues brought up, but I don't see any of those issues on the appeal. And this has been to the Planning Commission twice. The last time, it had five approvals, and it meets the requirements. It's a mixed-use project, it's infill, it's everything the state's asking for, and I don't know how we deny it. Send it back for what? I mean, it's, it's not going to be reduced. It's, there's nothing we can go back to the drawing board on. Everything has been met, so, I mean, we're just, you know, we can kick the can down the road and...
Right now, there is no communication between the public... Excuse me, ma'am. She's speaking, so let her speak. Go ahead.
All right, I'm, that's it. I'm good.
Okay. Councilmember Weiss.
I have concerns, which is why I support our action to provide local control back to local governments. The state density bonus law, to me, is, in certain circumstances, I understand it, and I understand why the state's doing it. I don't think this is the right place for it, but I also think our hands are tied. I would like to see if, is there some objection, objectionable standards we can put in place so that when projects like this come forward, we do have a basis to modify them or say no? I don't need the answer now, but I'd like for staff to get back to us at some point to say, "Here are things you can do so that we don't have, you know, what I think is going to be a huge parking problem." I think, I think they're going to be, it's going to be a parking problem. So is there something we can put together that would allow us to make changes? Yes.
Anyone else? How much time do I have?
You have about a minute thirty.
First of all, I know other cities, and I've heard other cities, other mayors telling me that they have been working, having staff address this so that they can, they would not be hurt, hit as hard with the new laws. So I am glad, and I support Councilmember Weiss's direction to staff, that we try to build, I forget how Assemblymember Tasha Bornor Horbach put it, but, but put a trench around it so that we can, you know, have the ability to control more of our, of these, of this activity. I do feel that the preponderance of the evidence has been met. I do feel that council can come back with written findings based on all the testimony that was produced, as well as the comments. And I do feel that there is a culpable claim that was made about the lack of CEQA. They were asking, they were basically saying that the traffic studies were insufficient and discussed that for a very long time. So I do feel that this, that we, I'm urging the council to vote yes on the motion on the floor, which is to grant the appeal. Let's vote.
Two, three. Jensen, Rodriguez, Weiss, no.
Do I have a second to my motion?
Yes, second. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Councilmember Weiss, second in my motion, so if we can please vote on...
So just to have a clear record, this is to deny the appeal and affirm the Planning Commission's resolution with the added conditions that Mr. Nightengale mentioned.
I would also like to ask if there is support to reduce the height from four stories to three stories to ensure that South O projects moving forward will be no more than three stories. Is there support for that?
Is that, is that an issue we can address right now?
Yeah, we can give direction to staff.
We would have to come back with an item. We can't certainly debate or deliberate on that tonight. We would have to agendize it for a future discussion. So I guess the question is, do you want to have us agendize that issue for a future meeting?
Could we add parking to that issue? And so we can address critical parking issues coming up and see how we can address...
Address parking as well, yes.
I mean, state, yes, but state law specifies parking requirements for density bonus projects.
There are other ways of addressing. We can build public parking.
Yes. So the motion that I have right now is a motion from Councilmember Rodriguez to support staff's recommendation to adopt the resolution.
And a second by Peter.
And it's seconded by Councilmember Weiss, but Councilmember Weiss added with the added conditions.
Well, he's giving direction to staff.
There are two added conditions.
That was just like, hey, staff.
That was a direction to staff.
Direction to staff.
I'm not sure the record's picking this up, but Mr. City Clerk, there were two added conditions that Mr. Nightengale reviewed. One limiting or prohibiting short-term rentals, and the second, removing the CFD condition, since there is no public safety CFD.
That's what he was referring to as to the motion, but he also, Councilmember Weiss, if you want to correct me, you also gave direction to staff to look at other ways of addressing this high density.
Right, and if you can come back with something.
Yep. Density, so density, height.
We don't need a motion on that.
Two, three.
We're hearing you, so we'll, we can come back on that.
Okay, and the parking, address parking. Okay. Councilmember Rodriguez, did you still want to speak?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
So staff's clear that there's some concerns, and they'll get back to us with a pass-through memo. That's not a part of this motion. We're approving staff's recommendation. That's what we're voting on right now. If we could please vote.
Motion approved. Three, two. Sanchez, Keim, no.
Thank you. We're now on item number 29. And that's introduction of an ordinance to amend Articles 4A and 12, the downtown zoning ordinance to provide for additional commercial uses within the downtown use matrix while streamlining the review of such uses as modified by the California Coastal Commission as part of the implementation plan of the local coastal program, which is the LCP. I'm going to go ahead and open up this public hearing, request disclosure from council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff.
Staff.
No contact.
Staff.
Staff.
Mr. Navarro, were there any correspondence and or petitions?
All the correspondence that were received on this item was forwarded to council prior to the meeting.
Okay, I'm going to begin testimony with Mr. Nightengale, city planner.
Thank you. Honorable mayor, council members, members of the public, I'm Scott Nightengale from the Planning Division, here to present Agenda Item Number 29 for the adoption of amended text to Articles 4A and 12 of the downtown zoning ordinance to provide for additional commercial uses while streamlining the review of such uses and to include the modifications suggested by the California Coastal Commission. A little background on the project, back on February 2020, the city council, acting as the CDC, adopted the ordinance to update the land use classification of downtown zoning districts for Articles 4A, which is the land use definitions, and Article 12, which is the development standards and matrix table for the uses. The provisions of the new commercial uses in the downtown area generally consist with those uses that are allowed outside the downtown area. This proposal was actually to allow additional uses and more up-to-date commercial uses and to loosen some restrictions of some of the non-controversial uses as well. Specifically listed, regulated uses as either permitted with the CEP or prohibiting them entirely. So these were all approved during that public hearing on March 11, 2020, which the city council adopted the changes to this article. The modifications, like I said, were to strike out the text with the use permit from Article 4A, Section 423WC, definitions of accessory massage, such as the amended text for the matrix table for Article 12. So basically, within the definition for accessory massage, which falls under personal improvement services, to allow for accessory massage for day spas, nail salons, things of this nature. And the major intent for this is to allow these types of uses associated with hotels and accommodation-type uses. So that was not reflected in the initial staff's proposal, where we were allowing them by right, and that was already, that was still left in the definition. So what Coastal is asking on October 13, 2021, was to approve the amended changes with the one suggested modification as shown here. So here's the definition as it reads. Personal improvement services, like I said, allows for accessory massage by right. We would just be striking out the word use permit, but that would be consistent with the proposed matrix that was approved by council. But with that, staff recommends that city council introduce the ordinance and approve the suggested modifications from the California Coastal Commission by introducing ordinance RZA 1901 for adoption of resolution. concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any requests to speak?
We do not have any registered requests to speak on this item.
This is a time for the public to provide their input on this item. It is item number 29, very specific to this item. I see no one rising, so I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing. And I'm assuming you have nothing, no other comments to make, Mr. Nightengale? Back to the council.
That is correct. Thank you.
Move introduction.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, and no other lights. Mr. Mullen, please title the ordinance.
Thank you. This is the introduction of an ordinance of the city council, the city of Oceanside, amending Articles 4A and 12 of the downtown zoning ordinance to provide for additional commercial uses while streamlining the review of such uses with modifications suggested by the California Coastal Commission.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved. Five, oh.
Thank you. We're on item number 33, and that is my request for the annual review and appointments of council members to boards, commissions, and committees. Want to begin with a statement here. I put forth a list of nominations. Basically, these were not my nominations. This was actually a rollover from last year, so they would have been Councilmember Weiss's nominations from last year. Beginning last council meeting, however, I am being overridden by my colleagues here. This was a battle that was fought by my predecessor, Mayor Jim Wood. He felt very strongly about being able to make appointments because he was the mayor. Certainly, I didn't think any of the regional appointments had, were controversial because they were actually made by someone other than I. In fact, last year, I actually voted against it. But in an effort to try to meet the demands of my colleagues here on the dais, I thought that that would actually be welcomed, that is, Councilmember Weiss's recommendations. I also reached out to Councilmember Rodriguez regarding Sandag and also what he wished to do with the boards and committees, and he basically advised me what he wanted to do. So having said all that, I saw that, in fact, oh, and in last, at the last council meeting, it was actually by, by our rules, the actual date I needed to come forward with respect to the, to naming a deputy mayor. And yes, I wanted to do a rotation. In fact, I did reach out to Councilmember Weiss and asked him if he would accept that. He said reluctantly he would, but he did accept it. I was actually surprised when he said he would not accept it, because he said that at the dais and didn't let me know beforehand. So that was very interesting to wait until we're at the dais. So, and basically, city, a deputy mayor is a ceremonial. It's not, it doesn't have any effect in law. It doesn't grant you any superpowers. So, and traditionally, when we were on the council, it was usually someone who was not running who would be the deputy mayor. So I was surprised by the reaction on the dais, in fact, and I think that what we should be doing is what's in the best interest of the city. I look to deputy mayor as a person who will help me if I have conflict, for example, if I need to be at two conflicting places at the same time, which has happened, in fact, but I was able to kind of, you know, put them, be able to actually go to both places that were close by, then I could do it, then I could have some help. It would presuppose a positive relationship, for example. So I've worked with Peter before for, gosh, 21 years now. So I've worked with Peter before for, gosh, 21 years now. So I didn't see a problem with that. Again, just ceremonial. In fact, this past year, while having several of these regional boards and committees, I didn't have to ask, I didn't have to ask Ryan for any help at all. Never reached out to him. The only time I reached out to him was when I had North County Transit District, and I asked him several times, could you please be as alternate, he was my alternate, could you please make these meetings? And he said, absolutely not. So I understood that he was not available for NCTD at all, but I understood that perhaps he could. So having said all that, I am, as Mayor Wood was when this happened to him, deeply disappointed that even putting forth councilmember Weiss's list met with such a reaction that Deputy Mayor Kime, because not being able to get a second to my motion means he's deputy mayor again, and I will try very hard not to have you do anything. I will try very hard to, again, not need your services. That he felt so strongly that he had to come up with his own list, even though I'm available as a mayor to be able to do this. So I am withdrawing my nominations, because obviously, they are not acceptable to either councilmember Weiss or Kime, councilmembers Kime and Weiss. So I'm going to go ahead and withdraw that and get to the next item on the agenda, which is requests by Deputy Mayor Kime and Councilmember Weiss to make nominations to regional boards and commissions.
My lights pushed mayor on this item.
Item number 34.
Your item, your item, 33.
No, I already withdrew it, sorry. Item number 34, would you like to speak to that?
Well, what are we going to do on the City Harbor and CDC advisory groups? Because I'm fine with those recommendations you made. I'm just not, I'm not.
I just withdrew the whole thing. So.
How's the liaison going to break down then, Madam Mayor? Are you okay with just?
They roll over.
Just roll over?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
So we're now on item number 34. Ryan, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, I actually, I would love to. I'm sorry this had to delve into this level of back and forth on the dais. I'll explain what happened. So on the Monday prior to the council meeting, or about 10 days out, at 10 o'clock in the morning is a deadline to bring councilmember items. So the regional boards and appointments were supposed to be on the agenda, hadn't been turned in yet. So I waited till 9:45. Our deadline was at 10:00 in the morning so that we could do it. I want to make sure we didn't miss it. You had not turned it in, so as happens often, I filled in and turned it in. And magically, several minutes later, another copy turned in so that we could have this very argument and stoke some kind of controversy and conflict up here, which is absolutely unnecessary.
I turned mine in.
So I'd like to make.
By the time.
Madam Mayor, point of order, I'm speaking, please. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Point of personal privilege here, you're suggesting that I turn mine in because you turned yours in, and I had mine. In fact, the law says that if I don't, then you could have come back at a different time and said, okay, let's do it, or even on tonight, if I didn't do it.
Okay, well, we are doing, we are doing it tonight. I'd like to make a motion to approve that. And that's it. Thank you.
I really object to this. You've taken me completely off of all regional, or almost all regional, and I have really proven myself this past year as mayor. I have actually even been appointed by the mayors of the county to the Air Pollution Control District Board of Directors. And I have really risen to the occasion on, with respect to COVID and getting vaccines, the Wellness Center, Live Well Center, to be able to provide vaccines as quickly as possible on homeless issues, on affordable housing issues. And that's not going to change, obviously, because I do have a lot of relationships with councilmembers and mayors throughout the county. But I am very disappointed in my colleagues here that feel that they need to do this. Title doesn't do anything. It just doesn't. So let's vote.
Four oh one. Sanchez, no.
Thank you. General councilmember comments? Councilmember Weiss.
Yes, I would just like to take this opportunity to thank Jeff Hunt for his years of service to Oceanside. I believe Friday's his last day, and I just wanted to at least publicly acknowledge him and thank him for everything he's done for Oceanside.
Hopefully, he'll hear that. He's not here today, tonight. I would like to say, it's been so great to see people out and about. Unfortunately, we're back using masks for, hopefully, it's just a month because of the Omicron. But it was really nice to see people out for our tree lighting ceremony, which we hadn't been able to have, and really enjoy the holidays. So be safe. Also, the parade of lights. Great big thanks to the Oceanside Yacht Club for their hospitality in making this happen. Again, there were 20 entries, and it was such a wonderful, wonderful display. So happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Feliz Navidad, Prospero Ano Nuevo, Happy New Year. And a meeting adjourned until January, January 12, 3:30 PM. Happy holidays.